Understand, so away we go. Like to call this meeting to order, a regular meeting of the village board on Monday, April 4th at 7:00 PM in the Germantown Village Hall Boardroom and also can be accessed through WebEx. This meeting has been given public notice in accordance with Sections 19.83 and 19.84 of the Wisconsin statutes in such form that will apprise the general public and news media of subject matter that is intended for consideration and action. Role call shows all village board members present and accounted for. At this time, I'll ask us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, my nation.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is President's Report. Just a couple of things to report tonight. Just a reminder to everybody, tomorrow, Tuesday, April 5th, is an election day. There are many things on tomorrow's ballot, village board president, school board seats, county board seats, and judges. So please recognize where your polling station is and turn out to vote. And to give us a little bit more information on that, I'll turn it over to our village clerk.
Thank you. Yes, tomorrow is the spring election. Polls are open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you need to find your poll location or sample ballot, you can find them at myvote.wy.gov as well as on the village website. So please get out and vote.
Thank you. That's all I have to report tonight, so we'll go to the next item, which is announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee and department reports. We'll start with committee reports and committee chairs with trustee Kaminsky.
Just to note that the Public Works meeting that was originally scheduled for this Wednesday at 6:00 PM has been canceled. There just wasn't enough for that agenda. And so the next Public Works meeting will be at 6:00 PM in this room on May 11th, which is a Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Rick Miller.
General Government and Finance will meet on Monday, April 18th at 6:00 PM in this boardroom.
Thank you. Trustee Myers.
Mr. President, the next Public Safety meeting will be on May 2nd, 6:00 PM in this room.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports? Trustee Jan Miller.
We will be having a Fourth of July committee meeting right here in the village boardroom on April 12th, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you for that. And there are a couple of things that have already come out of that meeting, one being that there is going to be absolutely a Fourth of July parade and event after, along with fireworks that we're looking at planning right now. The only change is in past years, many of you might remember that we start the parade at noon and usually finish by 1:00, 1:30 at Fireman's Park. This year, we're looking at starting at 3:00 PM on the Fourth, and then there'll be activities in Fireman's Park, and then it will transition into the fireworks later that night. So we're looking for continuous activities and also music at the outdoor pavilion to help cover many of those hours from 4:30 till fireworks, which is usually 9:15, 9:30. So please plan on coming, please plan on attending the parade if you've been in the parade in past years and were wondering if there is going to be one. There absolutely is. They've sent out applications just recently, and you may have received it via email. Please consider joining the parade again. It's always great for all the participants and also for all those attending, and especially the kids, to see a nice full parade walk by, and they always seem to enjoy it very much. So please consider participating in this year's parade if you've done it in past years. Anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports? Trustee Myers.
I just want to report that the fireworks has been okayed for this year from the tourism. So I'll go to GGF for final approval.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, anything else for announcements of forthcoming events of public interest, committee or department reports? Okay, then we go on to the next item on the agenda, which is citizen input and public appearance on items not subject to a public hearing. There are no public hearings on tonight's agenda. Those in the audience that wish to come forward for citizen input and public appearance are welcome to do so, or those that are joining us via WebEx, you're also welcome to do so. All I would ask is you come to the podium and state your name and your address for the record, and if you've joined us via WebEx, please make sure you raise your hand or recognize so that the person that's monitoring WebEx can know that you are wishing to speak during this part of the agenda. Before we start and bring somebody forward, I do have several communications that we've received that I'd like to read as part of the record. And the first one came on Saturday, April 2nd, and it says, Dear Germantown Village Board, I have several concerns with the newest Germantown well, number 12, on Rockfield Road. I live very close to this and have concerns that this would draw down our private well, regardless of whether water is extended to Richfield, and cause a need to replace the pump, drill deeper, or even drill a new well. Richfield has proposed a $50,000 escrow fund to help pay for damage done to private wells. However, this is not nearly enough money considering that replacing the pump costs about $1,700 and drilling deeper costs about $5,500. That is for one well. There are over 70 homes in this area. Once the money runs out, which would not take long, or the tit closes 15 to 20 years from now, everyone else has to cover their own costs, even though Germantown Village caused the problem. The escrow only covers people within a half mile of well 12. Half of the Woodside Acres neighborhood is outside of that half-mile radius. There should be protection for the nearby residents' wells, even if Germantown doesn't extend water sewer to Richfield. Residents in our area are opposed to well number 12 in the first place, but were assured on June 18th, 2018, and November 2nd, 2020, by a village board meeting vote in which the village assured us the public well would be drilled deeper into the deeper sandstone aquifer, which is separate from the dolomite aquifer of our private wells, so that it would not impact us. However, when well number 12 was actually drilled a couple of years later, water was found at a shallower depth in the dolomite aquifer, so the drilling stopped there. Approval of this shallow well was never brought before the board for approval or to the residents for import. Rather intentional or not, this was bait and switch. At the village board meeting on March 20th, 2022, President Walter says he understands that our concerns have been raised now that the question of extending water to Richfield has come up, but that the well was needed anyways for Germantown. However, the residents near this well were opposed to this well in 2018 and voiced this back then. Our neighborhood also opposed the development of the Holy Hill District into industrial parks. Prior to that, we were opposed to the Miracle Home development in 2005, and on that same land, due to concerns about our wells and our homes due to the plastering taking place. So our concerns are not new because of Richfield. We have had these same concerns for nearly 20 years, and the village has repeatedly plowed ahead anyways. In addition, this expansion could very well lead to having to connect to Milwaukee Water. Larry Retacek, Director of Public Works, said at the March 30th meeting that no one can be certain about anything with well sustainability in the shallow or aquifer, but they are fairly confident that this should not cause problems for private wells in the area. If they are so confident, why doesn't Germantown set up an escrow fund for private wells in the area, regardless of water being extended to Richfield? When I asked this question at the March 30th meeting, see 1 hour, 42 minutes and 40 seconds on the meeting video, the village attorney, Sadak, replied that they would not do that because it's effectively assumed that this body recognized that if we're all wrong, then there will be a massive problems in that subdivision, and something needs to happen, that we're going to have 50 residents filling this room every meeting until something is done. Meanwhile, we can't live in our homes for an indefinite period of time because we will not have water for drinking, cooking, flushing toilets, washing hands, taking showers, et cetera. Mr. Sadak then said, if this body doesn't, then you're going to elect folks that will do something about this. Waiting for elections to vote and people who are covering our costs could take years. That response is unacceptable to me. In addition, most of the people who are pushing for all this development have caused the issues that have led to our concerns, are not in elected positions, and some don't even live in Germantown or Washington County, other than President Walter, i.e. the village planner, administrator, attorney, and head of Department Works. Mr. Sadak and Mr. Kreckel stated that if Richfield's escrow is approved, Germantown would write the requirements later for how residents could access the funds through the Public Works Committee. That should be written up now before anything else is approved. Here is what I would like to see the Germantown Village Board do. Do not extend water and sewer service to Richfield. Side note, I also do not want to have a 1 million square foot building with all the associated traffic very close to our once-quiet community. Establish a Germantown escrow fund for private wells of at least $500,000 for one-mile radius around well number 12. Other well, water areas of the village have already been negatively affected by the expansion of public wells. Establish criteria for residents to how to access these funds, and do not make it time-consuming process or limited in scope. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter. For more background information on this topic, please watch the videos of the Germantown Village Board meetings from 6:18, 18, and 11:00, 20, specifically the last five minutes of the second one in which only one trustee advocated for our wells, and that is sincerely Katie Kouts. The second communication we received was on Monday, April 4th, and it says, all I am writing, as a concerned citizen of Germantown, I and my wife live at North 140 West 18316, Cedar Lane in Germantown. We have lived there for almost 18 years and have watched the village grow a lot in that time. Most of it was good growth, in my opinion. We are watching it grow dramatically right now, and most of it, again, is good growth, in my opinion. As a resident landowner, business owner, I have listened to the proposal for us to provide sewer and water to Richfield. I do not see the benefits outweighing the risks in Germantown providing Richfield sewer and water. The small benefit of a 20% bump in sewer rates does not outweigh the risks to our private wells, the risk to our future growth and needing to spend more to upside sewer lines to MMSD in the future, and the risk to maintaining those lines in the future. 20% may seem like a lot. From a business perspective, it is nothing when something goes wrong. The risks to something going wrong are more significant than what are being discussed. The amount of money that our community has spent developing infrastructure was spent for our Germantown community. I don't know how many listening sessions were held on this topic, but I was able to attend the last one via WebEx. There were many Germantown residents there in opposition. I did not hear anyone in Germantown express approval or support for this project. Please vote no on this and keep Germantown residents first, your first priority. Sincerely, Jeff Braun. Next communication we received was today, and it reads, I received, it actually came through Jan Miller as a foreword, and it says, Dear trustee Miller, water is a precious resource and its supply is not infinite. I encourage the village board members to consider long-term implications of extending our water and sewer services to Richfield and not to squander our precious resource for seemingly uncertain or disproportional gain. While there is nothing to be said about inter-community cooperation, it should, while there is something, I'm sorry, to be said about inter-community cooperation, it should not be in lieu of Germantown's best interests, and I am not convinced that the proposal is a win-win situation. Please put the long-term interest of Germantown first. And that is from Lilbeth Yow. That's all the three communications that we received in regards to tonight's agenda item. And before I ask the first person to come up, please note that we have had several public hearings, we've had several listening sessions on this, we've received many of your emails, and we appreciate it all and all your participation. If you're here tonight to speak on this topic and have some new information you'd like to present, or possibly a new question in regards to this topic, then absolutely come forward. If we're here to go through what we've already heard or what you've already written us, I would consider, ask you to consider to shorten it a little bit, just in the timeliness of the number of people that may want to come up and the time that it would take to go through everybody and give them that opportunity. But it is your right, as part of this meeting, as part of citizen input and public appearance. So with that, then, I would ask, is there anyone within our audience that would like to come forward for citizen input or public appearance? Could you turn your microphone on, please? Mrs. Smythe, and just kind of make sure that you're within range so that people that are at home can hear you.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
My name's Melanie Smythe. I live at 17938 Cedar Lane in Germantown, although it's a Richfield address. I spent some time going through the agreement, because I had not had an opportunity to do that, and also reevaluating the presentation that I've seen twice now. But before I start with that, I'd just like to say to the board, the listening session was great last week. Thank you for making time for us. It was very important for this subject and for many others that will be coming up. So thank you very much. I also have a request before I start on my comments. I read the meeting minutes from the 30th session, March 30th session, and not all of my comments made it into the minutes. I would like the record to be amended to include these items. One of them was put a moratorium on all new development discussions until the 2050 planning is complete. Engage the community with a minimum of 60% participation rate in the discussions during the planning sessions. These are unique numbers, not the same people showing up. Fix the website. There are many links with wrong information, and it's hard to navigate. Develop a communication plan for village residents and businesses. There should be a minimum of three notices for planning sessions, such as the 2050. I'm up to two right now, so good, thank you. Finish the 2050 plan and provide us with a summary of what the $90,000 that has already been spent has given us to date. It took me a while, but I was able to find the plan as it currently stands in meeting minutes. There is not an easy way to get to it through the 2050 comprehensive plan in an easy link, and I think there ought to be. So now I will move on to water and sewer extension. Trustees, I'm addressing you at first. I have a development background. I worked for McDonald's for 14 years, nine scouting new sites and building restaurants, and the rest working on a real estate team where we negotiated master agreements between oil companies and McDonald's for joint development. You are being asked to accept a real estate deal without having all of the details. You are in an impossible situation. The information provided is sorely lacking in a forward look, the economic backdrop, in a forward look, the economic backdrop, and there has not been what is commonly called a site investigation report. There is no pro forma that I have seen, or maybe you, that discusses costs of getting started, revenue expenditures, operating costs, looking out 20 years. There's no analysis of the likelihood of success for this deal. There's no review of what are termed red, yellow, and green thresholds, red being stop, yellow maybe, green go. A few things to point out. Putting time restraints on a deal is a developer's trick to inject a sense of urgency. Urgency makes people cut corners. That is where we are today. You have fallen for it. There is no going back on this agreement as written. The most startling sentence in the document is on page 11. Section I, Term of Contract. This term of contract shall run indefinitely. It's like, wow. Some other questions that came out of my reviewing the agreement. Was this an actual negotiation, or did Germantown just accept an offer? If there was a negotiation, what information was exchanged, and may we see it? Would Richfield and the developer be willing to up their contribution if an actual pro forma analysis were developed and showed how unbalanced the deal is for Germantown? Why is no in-depth forward look at operating a public water service not available for this project? What research has the village completed to learn about running a water system for non-Germantown customers? It can't be just as simple as extending activity already since we're crossing intergovernmental lines, and we don't know what the costs are because no cost study has been done that's comprehensive. Why has no site investigation been completed? This would show all the jurisdictions having a say in the project, the PSC, MMSD, the Watgo companies, which is the railroad owner, they may have something to say about this, and there's many more. One gentleman at the listening session last week made a valid point. He said that there is a value to our existing water system. The fact that we have something of value is why Richfield came to us in the first place. Should there not be some monetary consideration for the upkeep of the existing system? After all, once connected, they are connected to it all, and that's why they came to us in the first place. The cost of current upkeep should be factored into the price of admission by them. This is called Green's fees in real estate terms. A real estate deal review includes a very thick packet of information and provides all of the information. And why do you want all of this information? So that you can make the best decision, prepare for any shortcomings, understand all the costs, and any activity needed to make the deal successful. So you're being asked to make a decision based on incomplete information. Can you answer to your constituents that you have enough information to vote yes at this time? There is a memorandum of understanding in place. That is usually enough for where a project is at this stage, in the investigation stage. Complete the investigation and the cost analysis, and then we will know how good or bad this deal actually is for Germantown. A vote today is out of place and is an unreasonable ask of you all. Signing an agreement is the last thing you do in real estate after you've reviewed everything and made the decision, and this is done to prevent mistakes and make sure it's a success. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else that wishes to come forward at this time to speak for, or I'm sorry, as part of citizen input or public appearance? Anyone else wishing to come forward for citizen input, public appearance? Evening, Ms. Kowalski.
Hello. Do you want, do you need information? Does someone need?
Yep, that would be great, thank you.
Okay, so my name is Judy Kouts, and I live in, I don't know what we call that, Woodside Acres. We are on our own private well. So I sent a letter, email, to all of the trustees. I know not all of you are my trustee, but I did send one to all trustees. I heard back from several people. I heard back from President Walter. Thank you very much for corresponding. I didn't have time to reply back because it's just been crazy. I do appreciate that. I appreciate Mr. Nyreth, I appreciate your reply. Jan, I believe you had a reply. Mr. Hudson, thank you very much. They're not in my district, but they replied, and I think that, thank you for that. For everybody else I did not hear from, kind of disappointed that I didn't hear from both my trustees, but I do, I would like that to happen in the future when we correspond. We feel like these are, you're elected, and we elected you, and so when we correspond with you, we, I don't want to lecture you, I'd just like to get a reply. It doesn't even have to be like in-depth. Mr. Nyreth just said, I thank you for your concerns, and so on. So it was very brief, but I appreciate it. Before I start mine, I have a neighbor who's disabled and is not able to come tonight, but she was, we've been talking, and she told me that a few years back when the Hignight thing was going on, she had some problems with their well where it was sucking air, basically. So she had to have service on it. She's in a, well, her well is 194 feet deep, which is rather deep for, considering the people in my neighborhood I've talked to are pretty much in the maybe 160 to 180 range. So that's pretty deep. But her water surface level was at 58 feet at that time. They had to lower her pump, though, because it was not reaching water, so the pump was placed at 100 feet, because I think her original one was only like in the 40s. So they dropped it quite a bit. But then prior records had indicated that the water surface level was at 46 feet, which means, she said she doesn't know the dates, but if anybody wanted them, I'm sure she could find them. She said that it was a 12-foot drop, so decline in the water level from 58 down to 46. So we know that water levels are dropping out by us. We've had other people say this. We've had neighbors who have had to drill their wells deeper. If you need to find out who they are, I'm sure you can get that information. One of my neighbors is here tonight who had to have their total well re-drilled, and it went, because this was after the Hignight thing too, when they were blasting so much, we think it did something underground that it affected the aquifer that they were in. And they're right next door to me. Makes me nervous. My well is not as deep as theirs. So, and it doesn't necessarily matter the depth, it's which part of the aquifer you're in, and it can get good and it can get bad. And I have other neighbors who have a well that is sucking up water with arsenic in it, and that has to do with the way rock breaks down, and if you just happen to go through that section when you're drilling, you hit that, that gets in your water. And so that's where they're at, and they have to have a mitigation system for their well. So anyway, I did send these emails, and I did, I tried to do the Reader's Digest condensed version of what I sent so that I could just get this on public record, because it's on your record, but I want the rest of Germantown who's listening, if they are, hopefully, or can go back and look at the meeting and hear what I had to say, because I want them to know what I told you. So they know when you vote, were you listening to the residents, and were you really listening, or were you just, you rattled off a really long one, and I know it was long.
I rattled it off?
Well, you were pretty fast. Yeah, I would say you spoke at like a, you're almost like at an auctioneer level. I can't speak quite that fast.
Oh, you're talking about the letter from your daughter?
Yes, from my daughter. So I can speak quickly, but I can't speak.
All right, sorry.
That's all right, I'll go quickly. I mean, people can maybe go back and, you know, listen again. It's very important what she said, and I might, I might reiterate some of it. We think kind of alike, you know? We live in the same house. Okay, so I'm just saying that recently found out that what we were told at two different public meetings was false. At both the June 18th, 2018, and November 2nd, 2020 Germantown Village Board meetings, the public was told that well 12 was going to be drilled into a deep, this is a quote, "deep aquifer," that meant that it would be in a lower aquifer than the wells in our area would be in. However, when it came time to drill, they actually ended up in the same aquifer that we are all in. While we understand that plans can change, there was never any public meeting or input when this decision was made. When you told us what your plans were back in 2018, we believed you and did not pursue any further actions to follow up with concerns we had for our wells. If we had been given notice, we would have come before the board again to express our very legitimate concerns. During the November 2nd, 2020 meeting, the board members were talking about how the water in the deep aquifer was not going down, so they weren't seeing a decline in the deeper aquifers, but we're in the upper aquifer, the dolomite. So they said it would be a great idea at that time to drill into that aquifer, and I believe, Teri, you, or Ms. Kaminsky, I don't want to call you by first name unless you say it's all right, but you had said that, that you thought that it was a good idea to go into the deep well at that meeting because that's what they were advising. So I agree, it sounded like a good idea. But then they ended up in our, in our aquifer, which is a dolomite, which is up higher. So I believe we need the village to pay for a licensed pump installer to measure the depth to water as it is currently, and this would be a baseline. So in case our well pumps suddenly stop bringing up water, we would have the village of Germantown pay for lowering the pump to a depth that makes it working again, because sometimes that's all it needs, is to drop it. But it is expensive, and that's why we don't want to incur that cost as the homeowner. So back in 2005, I'm going back a ways, a lot of you were not on the board. I don't think any of you were, maybe. I don't remember. But Miracle Homes had crafted a deal with the village of Germantown to build a miracle village of sorts on the same land that the current concrete gateway to Germantown sits. Mr. Hignight had studies from hydrologists about the potential for the wells that he was going to put on the property, causing a drawdown of the neighboring wells. He had a sufficient enough concern for our wells that he sent a letter to all of the residents within 3,000 feet of their property. In the letter, Miracle Homes was promising well protection and a well guarantee. They were also willing to pay for monitoring of our wells annually. Now, fast forward, 2022, Germantown is proposing sending our very valuable resource of water to the village of Richfield. Not too many years ago, there was talk of the potential need to get water for our own village from Milwaukee, if all you know that. How do we go from the possibility to, that possibility of getting water from Milwaukee to now wanting to sell the water that we have to Richfield? We have been told that we have plenty of water, and we will not need to get it from Milwaukee. The people who say this must have a way to see into the future. With natural resources, there are no guarantees. This water could dry up next week, and then where would Germantown residents be? Not just the well owners, but the entire village. So this water issue is not a private well concern, it's a well owner concern. It's also affecting the entire village of Germantown potentially. Water is a resource that we should never take for granted. It is obviously required to sustain our very lives. Without it, we die. The same is true of a town. Without water, the town will surely die off. It may sound heartless to say that we would rather look to our own interest in this, but we do have to consider our own village first. I love Germantown. I don't want it to decline. I like Richfield, too, by the way. I don't have a problem with Richfield. I love Richfield. I go there, you know, I know people live there. It's a great place. Okay, but again, we need to look here first. So at the same November 2nd, 2020 board meeting, this discussion was about whether we should extend water sewer service to Richfield centered on a survey that was done of village residents. This was a small group, maybe 160 or so residents. The survey showed that nearly 60% of Germantown residents were opposed to this idea. In a representative government such as ours, these wishes need to be honored. Perhaps this needs to go to a referendum, is my question. Another problem with this whole idea of sharing our water and taking back the wastewater from Richfield is the cost of it all. We should be given hard data about what these costs will be as. Perhaps this needs to go to a referendum is my question. Another problem with this whole idea of sharing our water and taking back the wastewater from Richfield is the cost of it all. We should be given hard data about what these costs will be as. Got your name. Melanie, thank you. Sorry. Too many people, too many faces, and I'm new. Anyway, as Melanie mentioned about the costs, we should be given the hard data about what they would be. In the current intergovernmental agreement being put forth between Germantown and Richfield, Germantown is bearing a lot of cost. As stated in this agreement, we would own, operate, and maintain the sanitary sewer and municipal water systems located within Richfield boundaries, not just ours, but over the, over the border. We have no idea what this could entail. Again, there is no crystal ball looking into the future. We would also need to tear up roads and dig up ground that's been dug up before to make way for larger sewer pipes. We would also bear the costs of this. How about fixing and repaving the roads in our village that are in disrepair before we do that? Like my neighborhood. In this intergovernmental agreement, the village of Richfield be asked to put us out $50,000 in an escrow account, you've heard all this before, in the event that they would drawdown our wells or cause a problem with our pumps. This amount is incredibly low if you consider what the actual cost to drill each well deeper, lower pumps, or drill brand-new wells. That amount needs to be closer to, my estimation, around $2 million. Sounds like a lot, but there are always problems. Also, they need to extend the distance from the well to one mile rather than a half mile and give this protection for longer than the TIF end date, which is, I don't know, 15 years your TIF would be?
15 to 20.
Okay. So, and I guess even that would probably be, as long as the wells were being monitored and things were going well, it'd be like, you know, you had said to my daughter, "You need to kind of sundown it," like maybe in 10, 15 years. I, I could go with that. I just think that they need to have a, a longer time period to get an idea of what's going to happen with our wells, regardless of whether we go with this thing with Richfield or not. So I just would hope that the village of Germantown would give consideration to this. I really appreciate your time. Thank you, all board members, and especially to those who responded to me. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming up. I just want to correct one part of your, of your proposal, or what, what your statement was. And just so that everybody's clear, when we talked about needing and paying the difference of enlarging pipes or sewer pipes, we weren't talking about the system that's in the ground now that goes up Rockfield, or actually it goes up Goldendale and then kind of crosses the federal property. What we were talking about is the $9, $9 million investment that, that Richfield would, would fund to bring the water and sewer from Holy Hill Road down to Freistat Road. If at that time we chose to enlarge that pipe when it was going into the ground, then we would pay the difference for that. But Richfield would be paying the main cost to trench it and put in the pipe that would be necessary for, I'll call it normal flow and normal water service in that area. What Richfield is also doing is paying half of the cost for any right-of-way that would be needed, not only for that infrastructure, but for a long-term road that may go over that once the engineering is a little bit further along. So there's no redigging up of what we have and we look at that as a way to offload the, the service that would go down Goldendale so that it wouldn't require enlarging, whether it be at the interceptor, at Freistat Road, or just in a flow of growth in that area 20, 25, 30 years out. It allows two paths down and that way it kind of splits the flow between those two pipes. So just to kind of, not correct, but to kind of redirect where that was.
I wasn't clear on that. And I appreciate that.
No, it's confusing and I, and I understand that. And I do appreciate the, everything else that you've come up and commented on. No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else that wishes to come up at this time to speak for, or I'm sorry, to public comment and citizen input and public appearance? I think I'm in a public hearing here.
Hi, good evening. My name is Julie Brown. I live at N140W18316 Cedar Lane. I'd sent an email around this morning, but you didn't read it, so I'm not sure if it's in the record, so I thought I should come up and get it in the record. I would like you to reject the intergovernmental agreement with the village of Richfield for water and sewer tonight. I do support the concept of intergovernmental cooperation to support common interests and solve shared problems, but this agreement does neither. I agree that administrative boundaries don't reflect the reality of how Germantown and Richfield's interests are related, but this plan doesn't achieve a true balance of interests. I believe that a shared vision for integrated holistic development could benefit all, but this agreement isn't anything of the sort. We are in the process of refining the vision for Germantown planning. To protect our interests, we should complete our new plan before we sign any agreement, especially one that could potentially increase demands on our infrastructure and public safety services and potentially change the rural character of our region. We are being asked to facilitate development that will impact us without having a say in the details of that development. I don't know why we would do that. We are being asked to be a good neighbor, but to do so blindly. And if we don't like the impact it has, the good neighbor has no recourse. As a practical matter, I think one could say, "We should do it because if we don't do it, someone else will do it. And at least if we do this, there might be some financial gain for us." I reject that argument. I think it's short-sighted. We should hold back and be very intentional about diverting our resources and only do so for a purpose that aligns with an agreed-upon, long-term vision and a plan for the right kind of development. We need to be good stewards for today and for future generations. The aggregate effects of land use are regional. If our neighbors want to work together and if we want to move forward in coordination with our neighbors, then let us have those conversations. And let us have those to include long-term objectives, standards, and a vision for the right kind of development that protects our resources and rural character. Anything short of that, including this agreement, is just putting our resources and our own options for future development up for sale. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward for citizen input or public appearance You have your slip, Scott?
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you for filling it out.
My name's Scott Hifley and I live right down the road. So again, I was here last week. I'm not affected by the actual building, but just as a maybe objective view in it, I did present some information, but I was conjecture on some of the things that I said and I didn't want to, I wanted to come here and correct what I said, which is, the population of Rich, Richfield, my conjecture was small, but in 1990, I went and checked the numbers. 9,000 people roughly, 1990, 10,373 in 2000, 2010, 11,3, and there's an estimated around 11,7, maybe 11,8. It's probably pushing 12,000. So I see growth slowing for Richfield because they obviously need water. There's only so many mound systems and so much, you know, water to drill that you can get. So obviously they need this resource from us. And I understand that. I said that last time. I think we have to work together. What I don't, I don't know if people know this, they probably do, but Germantown residents, we're seeing a huge increase in our water bills because our utility did not do any kind of cost of living increase or anything for roughly eight to 10 years. You guys on the board know all this. So we're going to see, I don't know what the exact number was, 60, 70, 80%, 50%, whatever the number ended up to be, increase in water. Sewer's been kind of stable. The people that have wells, you know, it was mentioned, it's $200 for mound system or $200 for water for them. Well, in Germantown, you know, the average person, I don't know what the average works out to be, I can tell you for me, you know, it's 1,200 bucks a year for sewer and water. And I don't have this huge house. So, you know, we just brought up our water to level where we're, you know, where we should be, I guess. And now we're just going to put 20% premium, which is nothing. We can't control the water. We can only control the sewer because the Public Service Commission, good luck with them. 20% doesn't cover anything. You can eat that up just probably throwing it in the utility and using it to just fix the aging infrastructure we have. Maybe we're behind on that, just getting up to that level. So that 20% is not going to cover anything, in my opinion. I mean, I'm not an engineer, but when you start digging in the ground, if there's a problem, and again, the biggest problem I have is that Richfield does not own these sewer lines or water lines. They're ours. Why are we owning sewer and water lines inside the village of Richfield? They should own their own. We own our own. We brought our water and sewer up millions of dollars. We spent over the last 30 years bringing all this water, all this sewer north. We, we made that as a, you know, Germantown had to grow. We saw the growth. We did the work. We spent the money. And now we're supposed to own sewer and water lines inside another municipal boundary. No one did that for us. So I'm not in favor of this, obviously, but I just think that more work needs to be done. I'm not saying we can't do something, but I think, and Richfield residents probably won't like this, you need to pay your share because we've certainly seen, you know, a lot of extra taxes in Germantown to improve the facilities we have. So I'm not in favor. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward for citizen input or public appearance?
John Jeffords, Richfield Village President, 4320 Pleasant Hill Road, Richfield. Tonight, I'd like to add a little more substance to a question that's come up more than once over the debate of whether our intergovernmental agreement that would add water and sewer to 500 acres of Richfield. The question was, why didn't Richfield have their own water and sewer? And why wasn't it done back in the 70s, 80s, or 90s? Well, we have to start with the makeup of the soils of Richfield. The glaciers left 15,000 years ago, glacier till that was essentially gravel. So really, the 36 square miles of Richfield is one very large gravel pit, with the exception of as you move to the east and you get to this subcontinental divide and you're east of the divide, the soils get heavier. There's a transition from more gravelly soil to more clay-like soil, and that continues into Lake Michigan. The watershed starts at the subcontinental divide that is very close to Highway 175. And all of the 500 acres that we're talking about is part of that watershed. The other part of Richfield, the area that has the caves, the outskirts, the roly-poly terrain and all gravel, supports the conventional septic system. So 1964 was when the first subdivision was created. And as the farming community began to retire and land became available and developers saw that you could support development with a conventional septic system and that the shallow aquifer supplied the water needed to support that, that's when development took place. In the middle of the 90s, the boards at that time were analyzing, "Well, what about this other area along Highway 41 that's not really conducive to residential development? It's more commercial, industrial." And so we knew that the development was taking on a rapid pace and decided to lower the density to three acres. And also, a little later on, maybe half a dozen, eight years later, began, did a water study, started to monitor the well depth to keep track of things, which, incidentally, in this last year, we're experiencing a drought. Water levels are lower in, in Richfield. So as we debated what to do and discussion centered on, should we go ahead and build our own system for that area? One of the things that we encountered, and I must mention that at that time, it wasn't until 2008 that we became a village. And that becomes important because townships don't have access to TIF funds at that time. I think that's still the case today. So TIF funds are a very important part that provide the financial engine, as Germantown knows, to industrial-type development. And so we didn't have access to that. Could we have built our own system? Right? We probably could by borrowing money that would put pressure on our million to $2 million budget. We're a small community. It just wasn't feasible. And so that's why when this proposal came forward, it became, actually when, when development took place on the east side of the freeway is recently, in the last, whatever, four or five years, that's when the opportunity started to rise to maybe, let's try to investigate and see if, if it's possible. We looked at, again, doing our own system and as I mentioned in the last public hearing, that that's in excess of $40 million. And so for that small of an area, it, it just doesn't work. So I hope that sheds a little bit of light on that. We thought we could become a village sooner, you know, if we could have become a village sooner in the 70s, 80s, or 90s, then we'd have access to TIF funds, growth, et cetera. However, the Department of Commerce saw otherwise. We didn't formally apply, but we had George Hall from the Department of Commerce come to the village numerous times in that timeframe, asking about our possibility to become incorporated. And he said, "Well, perhaps a very small area could," but again, that wasn't really possible for us until 2008, when there was a change in the law and instead of just one person making the decision, it became a committee process. And that led to us becoming a village. So I hope that adds, answers the question of why we didn't pursue water and sewer, sewer sooner. We, on the watershed that runs into the Mississippi, it's all gravel, there wasn't the need to do it because we could support housing with the soils that we have there and the water. So obviously, the proposal before you tonight, naturally, I'm, I'm in favor of, but I just want to take this opportunity, no matter how the trustees vote, one way or the other. I, I just want to say thank you to your village president for his leadership in providing the ability for us to get together, well, we started two years ago, and discuss the possibility. It took a long time to assemble the information, to bring it through the process. Greatly appreciate that. As well as the trustees who provided the extension, thorough analysis, many, many nights in closed sessions to bring it to a point where you can make a decision on it. And then, of course, your professional staff from the planning, engineering, legal, and your village engineer. Without them, all the detail, and they found the time in their busy schedules to assemble and work on and do the research to make it possible to make a decision tonight. So again, thank you very much and see what happens.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward at this time for citizen input or
My name is Jeff Brown. President Walter read some of my comments from earlier today that I emailed. I just have a few things to add. In the last listening session, I learned that Germantown Village has shallow wells and deep wells. Shallow wells are preferred as radium does not have to be removed. I learned that we had multiple attempts at drilling wells in the village that were not As one person from the village put it in the last meeting, we got lucky with this successful shallow well in number 12. If success in drilling wells is not guaranteed, doesn't that define a precious resource? Why not keep any reserve capacity for Germantown's potential needs? What if another food manufacturer wanted to come to one of our Germantown industrial parks and needed 1 million gallons of water a day? Wouldn't we regret giving away our excess capacity now? I could go on because there's many reasons why I believe this is not a good idea. I have not heard or met a Germantown resident who supports this. I've not heard or met a Germantown resident who supports this. Please listen to your residents and vote no.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward at this time for citizen importer public appearance?
Thank you for filling out the slip. Ben Wing, 494 Olympic Drive in Slinger. First, I would like to thank Dean Walter, who I did call this weekend and ask for permission to speak. As a former trustee representing the citizens around the water tower and was involved in early discussions with the Richfield Water Extension, Dean said, give me a day to think about it. And then he came back and said, okay, thank you for not canceling me, Dean.
No rash decisions ever.
Dean is a friend of mine, but you'll never tell from my political speeches. Both Richfield and Germantown have many private wells. Both have concerns when you own a private well, you know, safety is one and supply. Growing up in Germantown, my family's well went dry. When we looked to village officials, there was no real concern. As I remember growing up, slowly, people started going dry. We're a growing community, and we're all tapping it into shallow aquifer. The water level goes down. Basic science. Trustee Peiper has given her testimony of a similar experience. She grew up in Germantown in a different area, and there, too, the wells went dry. The wells are continually going dry in areas of Germantown throughout my life. And from what I heard from citizens, it has happened there, and there's the potential for it to happen more. But when you look at Richfield, they have a very extensive monitoring program. It's not two weeks, three weeks, couple wells. It's all year long, year after year, and you can see their documentation online, doing an excellent job. They're putting their residents first, who have these private wells. They're really listening to them and caring about them with many locations, and they don't only do this monitoring, but they take the data and they actually work with it and they use it for developing laws and how they're going to deal with developments. An example of that is Reflections Village, where Reflection Village, the developer came in and drilled a shallow well, and of course, they will, it's cheaper, right? And Richfield did monitoring around it and determined that, you know, you're affecting some of the private wells, so they forced them to drill deep, which they did. You know, kudos to Richfield. I think the Richfield Board is doing everything right, putting residents first. Meanwhile, here in Germantown, did I say something that wasn't accurate? They have a shallow well. Okay, so I was wrong about that. I thought I read that online, that they went deeper. Okay, so they're not in the aquifer of the residents?
The information from the audience is that that particular situation, that wasn't caused to go deeper, they have a shallower well. Just so those that can't hear the response know what was said.
Sorry if I was mistaken there. You have great concern for your private wells, though. You will admit that. You have an extensive monitoring system and you have laws in place. Meanwhile, here in Germantown, we all know about the Miracle Homes situation. Again, residents had concerns, they had a lot of concerns, but one of them was their wells. And there was, at that time, the village really wasn't protecting them, so they decided to get an attorney for protection. Later, as a board, when members of that community came on our board, Jeff Worderman, we started to understand that, hey, we need to start listening to the neighbors. So we fast forward to today, where Richfield wants water and sewer from Germantown, and they approached Germantown, and I don't blame them for asking. And as a board member, we continually voted, at least in a consensus in closed door, no, we're not doing this. And I look at your faces, you were with me, and I said, we're not doing this, maybe 20, 25 years from now. And it would go away, and we would tell our community, we're not going through with this. And then it would resurface. And then, again, we'd talk about it publicly and privately and say, it's, no, we're not doing this. I mean, this went on at least five times. There was even a time when Phil and Dennis brought it back for reconsideration after we knew it was totally dead. It just keeps coming back. This is, this happens in politics. In Washington, in the state level, they call them zombie bills. They think they kill them, but they just keep coming back. They're not assigned to any committee, which this wasn't, and it just keeps coming forward. Then there was the water tower vote, and the pressure was put on us, similar to how the lady before me talked about how there's pressure to make a decision really fast. If you remember that meeting, we were told, hey, we got to build this tower quick, quick, you got to make a decision, we got to make a decision, we're building this tower. What was that, 18 months ago? The tower still isn't complete. But at that night, we talked about, if we wanted to go with Richfield, we had to decide that night on the steel, and some of you who were there will remember that. We had to have fortified steel for the cone, and we could go higher, and we could provide Richfield with water in the future. It was still an option, we didn't have to. But we decided, no, we're not supplying Richfield with water, we're not spending that extra money, we're keeping costs down, the utility, we already were looking at increases in the utilities. So we decided, no, we're not doing that. There was no talk of going shallow, ever, at that meeting. In fact, Mike, I brought up at the meeting, thinking about my constituents, how is this well going to impact my constituents? Trustee Peiper brought it up, too. And for those of you at the meeting will recall, Larry, the head of DPW, came to this podium and declared that the well is going deep. This has no impact on residents, this should not be a discussion. All remember that. So here we are, DPW declares the well is going deep, administrator declares well is going deep, hydrologist study we had in hand says well is going deep, contractor said well is going deep, we vote for the well going deep, the paper, the newspaper, I have the article here, tells the citizens, the well is going deep, Dean signs a contract, the well is going deep. They have a shallow well. Something is missing in between all of these discussions and the shallow well. I wanted to investigate. What happened? I talked to trustees, Dean, village officials, no one can tell me anything. How did this happen without a public meeting, without even a public hearing, without even a notice in the newspaper to the residents? The only residents that were informed of it were the ones that I went door-to-door through my old district that I'm not even a trustee in anymore, that they don't even see their trustee or know who their trustees are. So what happened? Apparently, we have a well that's shallow and money was saved. Well, where did that money go? No one has explained this to me yet either. And I know there's an answer, and who voted to go shallow? And who voted on what to do with that money? That's a public utilities money, we need to be transparent in how we use that money and how we decide, especially when we just increased rates. Much of this could have been done in closed-door meetings that I'm unaware of, and maybe when I'm asking you the questions, you're not responding because you know it's illegal for you to tell me anything from a closed-door meeting. But why all the mystery? I mean, who's building this tower, the Illuminati? Why, why isn't there transparency? It's a water tower, it's not a nuclear silo. The other communities, when you look at their water tower, they have it all online, you can watch it, they have pictures of it being built, it's built in no time. Ours is sitting there after 18 months, half-built, waiting for another decision, waiting for another closed-door meeting. Why? Why not the transparency? I don't understand it. At one point, I was told from a village official that the reinforcement steel, which was very costly to do, didn't cost us anything, the developer just threw it in, free of charge. I got the text that no one believes that was told to me. I'm in construction, we don't do any, we are not putting steel or reinforcement on for free. Later, I was told, well, what we did was, we saved money by not going deep, we took that money and gave it to fortify the cone, so we could go higher for Richfield. Oh, okay, so this was all an attempt to circumvent the board's vote on a budget item that we wouldn't go any higher. How do we get this tower to fit Richfield? Now, we do it secretly, without notifying the residents. We save money this way and we build here. Now, this is just a theory right now, because you know as much as I do of how this happened, there were no meetings. I can't find anything online about how money was spent. Was there a new contract? Because the old contract didn't have any of this in. I don't know. Now we're told, you know, don't worry, your wells are going to be fine. The experts say it's going to be fine, the hydrologists say it's going to be fine, you heard similar stuff, and there's this warranty if you live within .5 miles, and you can prove it, but there's a $50,000 cap, which yawned me why you would even put that in there, because it's laughable to everybody. The only thing I can assume is the $50,000 cap is in there because they plan on adding it to look like, hey, we're really coming forward and we're coming through for the residents, and we can sport this, because later tonight, we're going to add hundreds of thousands of dollars in there. I mean, as it stands right now, Tom Hignite was offering you a better deal than your village. Tom Hignite. As for the extension, obviously, I've been one of the most outspoken trustees against the extension for well issues, water supply for the future, sewer capacities with our growth, future Germantown development and the competitive edge for the best projects. We're always competing, especially during downturns in the economy, for businesses to come here and see the other community. And I don't want to compete against Richfield, but we have to, because the companies come in and they say, hey, they're giving me a tax break, you're doing this, you got to beat their deal. We can say, hey, we got water and sewer, it's a competitive edge. And personally, I don't share the vision of Washington County and Josh, and if you listen to his vision, which he's had here before, it's a vision of growth from this project all the way up to West Bend. Mostly, he's talking industrial, because part of the vision is workforce housing to feed. These businesses all want workforce housing, because you all won't work for $15 an hour, so we need to bring those people in. This isn't my vision for the area, and it's kind of confusing to me, because they guarantee us the water and sewer is stopping with this Richfield development, but your vision goes all the way up to West Bend. Who's supplying the town of Polk with water and sewer? I'm sure of that. But I don't share this vision and this industry-first type of thing, I'm more of a neighborhood-first kind of guy. The focus should be on the development of Germantown. Here, we're spending all this time developing Richfield in this Washington County vision, and the vision, when he spoke, he never even mentioned Germantown, except for when, you know, we need your water, and we need something from you, but you're really not a part of our vision here. So I really think we need to stop serving outside interests over our own residents, and you might disagree with that and think this is serving our residents, because we're going to get a little bit of development along the freeway here. But so often, I think this board is serving outside interests, is like a servant to Washington County instead of the citizens. And I'll just give you one example. Washington County keeps trying to give us their roads, and we keep taking them. Well, why? We can't even take care of our own roads, and we're taking all these roads from Washington County. We're not thinking about the residents, we're serving Washington County. And lastly, obviously, this is controversial. And the way that we fumbled and bumbled this water tower project, haven't been transparent and forthright with the residents, and then you look at Richfield and see how they protect the wells and how they're working with residents, and they're doing everything right, I think we should model ourselves after them. And in doing so, we should have a referendum, because Richfield, they have instituted a trigger mechanism where, once they get past 175, if they want to extend water and sewer, it triggers a referendum, and because they know it's controversial. And that has settled the people in Richfield, they're happy with that. And it's appropriate and it's sound government, and we should follow it. Jeff Jeffords, he supports a referendum, he thinks it's good for his residents. Don, why not ours? Why not ours? Let's give the citizens of Germantown the same trust and respect that Richfield offers its residents. Voice and a referendum. Thank you.
Hold on, hold on. Couple points about yours. Secretly and transparent, I have a little problem with secretly and transparent, because there was a change order that came before the Public Works Committee for that change in not only well height or tower height, but also depth of. So that did come before the committee and was passed, and it probably passed under a majority, or actually, everybody, so it probably then ended up on consent agenda. The agreement between the Village of Germantown, Richfield, and the county was to split the cost to make the tower go higher. That also became before this board, and what was discovered, don't wait, I give you your time, give me mine, and then we can go back and forth. What was discovered, there are parts of Germantown that will require a higher tower to service them, and one of those areas is in the coal farm area, and that's just a fact. So if we're going to be looking at 20, 25 years out of expansion of services within Germantown, there are parts of Germantown that do require that higher tower in order to get water to them at correct pressures. Protective wells, you made some statements that we don't protect our wells, we don't monitor our wells, that we don't monitor our residents' wells, because the majority of our water comes from our wells. But from what I've heard from Director Retacek, is we are constantly monitoring the level of the water within our wells, and we know on a daily basis where that aquifer lies. Why wouldn't we? We depend on it as a village, we want to know that, too. So as we see it going down to certain levels, there has been in the past, and you might have been on the board then, maybe the first time through, when we had a pretty serious drought, and we were telling everybody, hey, you got to hold back, you got to hold back, our wells, our towers, we can't refill our towers, because we know where that aquifer is, and it's at a dangerous level, and we really need you to cut back on watering, which we've done several times. So there is a monitoring system in place for our wells, and if it's at a certain point in our well, then we know that the aquifers or the residents that are in that area will be at a similar distance. Now, you've got topography, I get it, that would change some of that, but we do monitor our wells on a regular basis. I like how you twisted the workforce housing, it's very nice, but that's not what he's doing, he's actually asking for it based on to keep the residents' kids in the community. So it's not workforce housing, it's, what is it? Next-generation housing. That's, okay, it's a twisted statement, I get it, you did it, he does it. He's a politician, you're very politically based.
I twist.
You said it, you called it workforce housing.
They've called it.
No.
Second gen.
No, right. Next generation.
Generational.
Right.
It's just a new term for.
Right, you twist it, he twists it. You're politically motivated, he's politically motivated. I'm just saying, that's what he calls it, that was the way he sells it, is to keep our residents' kids here in the community, give them the ability to afford housing in our community. You talked about us continuing to take on roads, we've traded roads with the, we've traded roads.
When I was on the board, you took a road and didn't trade.
We took Golden Dale, but we traded Freystadt for Wasaki.
You traded, but you took more road than you gave them.
But you're saying that we're always taking roads and we're not, we've switched roads. Yeah, we traded the Freystadt for Wasaki. Different day, different time. And then the referendum, which I don't disagree with, and it's really up to the board to decide if they want one or not, I'm not a high proponent of running village government or county government by referendum, because I look to the West and I look at California, and how does that work for them? By running all their governments with referendums, and what does that save their taxpayers? And how does that save their costs when they've run many, many referendums through on a lot of their village levels, their county levels, and their municipality levels? So they've been doing that for 40 years, and it hasn't worked out well for them, but that's still a board decision, and it's up to them if somebody wants to put that forward and put it to vote. And I don't disagree that that's a possible way. But the only thing that I've learned in talking with the village attorney is, we can't put it up as a binding referendum. It would be a non-binding, so again, it would be like a survey. And maybe the village attorney can enlighten us a little bit as to why that is. And maybe the village attorney can enlighten us a little bit as to why that is.
May I respond?
Sure.
First of all, when it comes to monitoring, my comments were that we don't monitor to the extent that I see Richfield. I was served on this board up and on for 15 years. I have never seen the charts and graphs and all the work they do looking to protect neighbors' wells. Never saw that.
But you've been a part of watering restrictions.
There's monitoring we do certainly, never to that level. In fact, there's not many communities that do it to that level. I think Mech One has been. Also, this narrative that started that, well, we needed to build this tall, this tower taller to reach the coal farm in Freistad and we wanted to develop that, that never was before us when we were first talking about the tower. That was a narrative that was created, in my estimation, this is my opinion, when you failed to get the tower approved by the board. A narrative was created that how can we get the board to reconsider that and build it taller? And they came up with a narrative of building out Freistad Road and the coal farm. That was never discussed among any of the trustees before the denial. And then they needed a narrative.
Can I respond to one point on that?
To change. Can I go through all my?
Sure you can. Sure you can.
And the referendum, you're creating strong man argument. You go on and on about California having all these referendums and all these referendums. I never suggested that anything coming before this board should all go to a referendum. All I'm suggesting is we have a community in Richfield that wants our water. They have a program where they require a referendum. What's good for them should certainly be good for us. It's the same thing. It's a controversial water sewer extension. And I may surprise the crowd here by saying that if there's an amendment or a referendum, and we'll have to look at the binding part of it. I would want it to be binding. We'll see why it couldn't be. If there was a binding referendum, I'm not opposed to this going forward. And for the people that would be surprised in that, thinking that we want to kill this tonight and have it dead, it's a zombie bill. This could be voted against. We can vote against this tonight and it can come back next week with just a few things changed. Or it could come back exactly the way it is. Like, what is it, 90 days from now?
Sixteen to ninety. What is it, village attorney? Ninety days? Thank you.
So, you vote against this and then you leave thinking that it's a victory. Look at how many times we've said no to Richfield and they're sitting here in this boardroom tonight. The no doesn't kill the zombie. It just keeps coming back. You can't, you're better off having a referendum and just saying, let's have a binding referendum and give it to the people of Germantown to decide. So, I'm all for this moving forward if there's a binding referendum. Now, let me hear why there can't be a binding referendum. And I'd also like to know if Richfield's is a binding referendum.
With due respect, Mr. President, I am not going to answer that. We are in public input at this point. I will talk about that during the consideration of it.
It's the attorney.
But please, please, when you discuss it, discuss whether Richfield's is a binding referendum or not. Because I think that would be interesting to certain Richfield residents that I know.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you for coming forward. Anyone else that wishes to come forward for citizen importer public appearance at this time? Is there anyone that's pointing us, WebEx, that would like to join in? Somebody with their hand up? Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to come forward for citizen importer public appearance? Yes, sir.
Thank you, President Walter. Don Kreefall, I'm the Washington County Board Chairman. I live in Richfield, full disclosure. Forty-one thirty-eight stone even weight. Water is, agreed, one of our greatest resources. Without it, we wouldn't be here. We're roughly 80% water. But also, you have to understand, water is our greatest and easiest thing to recycle. We're made about 80% water. Some of that water that's in here has been here since the dawn of time. So, it cycles. Wells will raise. Wells will draw down based upon how precipitation and how the water goes to the surface. But it's not just the water, sharing of the water and the intergovernmental cooperation we're talking about. I don't know if everybody has an opportunity to go through Waukesha County and see what Waukesha County is like. That's what happens when you have unbridled progress and development. They didn't, they didn't control their development. They didn't manage it. It got out of control. Part of, part of the foresight of this group here in Richfield, that they can see that development's coming. We can't stop it from coming, but we can manage it. And we can manage it within what I like to call corridors, right along the freeway. That way, it doesn't affect the quality of life for the county of Washington. Washington County has the number one quality of life in the entire state. The number one county for quality of life in the entire state and don't want to change that. So, we see this development. We know it's going to come. It's beneficial, but we want to be able to manage it. In regards to the previous gentleman talking about the plan with next generation housing, I have to respectfully disagree with his assessment on it. This is housing that, can anybody remember, have you bought a, your first house you bought was a starter home? Remember those? Remember you didn't come in and buy a half a million dollar home? Well, in order for me to be able to stay in the county of, the best county in the state when I retire this month, I want to have a house that I can afford when I downsize from my house. Right? And I want to be able to find a house that can do that. So, not only are we going to have our kids come back to live in our community and to contribute in our community and be part of our family in our community, we're going to have a place for seniors. When they decide that I want to downsize, there's going to be housing for me too. So, the, the whole development projects that are happening, we have to look beyond today. We have to look to tomorrow. Richfield is paying the majority of it. Washington County is throwing money into it also to pay for almost all the infrastructure for this expansion. Almost all the infrastructure. Then Germantown's going to be realizing between $1 million and $1.5 million per year in revenue coming from this new development in Richfield, which is going to pay for all of your infrastructure and all of your improvements in your infrastructure and moving and getting more people hooked up that have had wells maybe that are too shallow. You know, it'll be able to move that, that system around the village of Germantown and the development in Richfield is going to pay for it for you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Kreefall, for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward for citizen importer public appearance at this time? Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward for citizen importer public appearance? Yes, sir.
So, I live at W-209 and 13524 Robin Hood Drive. I called every one of you today, left the messages, some talked to others. I think I talked to you last, Mr. Walter. You mentioned that they had, whoever's running this well, number 12, had done a 72-hour test at full capacity and the wells that were monitored dropped about eight feet. I'm just wondering, okay, that's a 72-hour test. What, what happens when this thing's turned on, you know, constantly? I know it's not running at full capacity all the time or not even close to it. But what's, is there any long-term studies on what this does to the aquifer, you know, two, three, five years from now? They, you know, everybody said we were going to go deep. Now, it's shallow. We have a 2050, look, you know, whatever we call that, plan review coming up. This just seems kind of premature that we're voting on giving away our water now. We don't know what we want to do developing Germantown in the future. I understand that Richfield, I understand their interest in it. I understand being a good neighbor. But this just seems foolhardy, foolhardy to give one of our natural resources away.
Thank you for coming forward. Is there anyone else that wishes to come forward for citizen importer public appearance? Anyone else? Citizen importer public appearance at this time? Okay, thank you. If there's no one else, then we can go on to the next item on the agenda, which is consent agenda. Board?
Make a move.
Consent agenda.
Sure, microphones are on, please.
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through C.
Second. Motion made and seconded to approve consent agenda items A through C. Is there any discussion on that motion to approve? No discussion? We'll do roll call vote, please.
Trustee Peeper?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Bob?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
President Walter?
Aye.
All right. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business, which there is none, public hearings, which there are none. So, that then takes us to new business.
Motion to.
Trustee Peep.
And I'm kind of feeling a little bit like a circus ringmaster, a little bit maybe. But just to kind of provide the overview, there may be people who haven't been part of the process. In addition, I want to talk just briefly about one change to the agreement that may matter to the folks that are in the audience. And then Director Reticek likewise has a couple pieces of background information to answer some questions that had been raised previously as well. So, in terms of the IGA itself, effectively, what the IGA provides is that Germantown provides service to the entire, what they call the Northeast Corridor. That is the kind of orange area here in the top left of the map. The initial service would be intended to serve a tid that is going to create that would be for Hillwood Development, who has some land under contract there, including the potential for, you know, potentially a 1 million square foot warehouse or distribution type facility is one of the thoughts that's being presented, as well as some other development within that tax increment district. Likewise, service would be authorized for all of the currently existing uses within the, within the area based on the zoning. And then any additional uses or new uses would be subject to our reasonable approval. For those of you on the board, there was change. We kind of flushed out what reasonable would mean. You were provided all of that by email with the current agreement. Under the agreement, Richfield pays for all costs associated with installing service, whether it's part of this initial provision of service to the tax increment district or anywhere within the Northeast Corridor. Germantown would pay to the extent that we determine it's necessary to upsize the pipe effectively. So, it's a relatively small cost in the grand scheme of things. As we've looked at it further, it may be that there may not need to be any upsizing at all. Obviously, some of that is going to depend on things like what is the 2050 plan ultimately end up looking like? You know, those types of concerns. Lastly, Richfield pays for effectively all of the operating costs through the rates that are charged. Recall that we've discussed this repeatedly. The rates are designed to cover our costs. That includes billing. That includes administration. That includes repairs. That includes just regular maintenance. All of that is included in the rates. And by the rate payers there, you know, their cost or their rates help cover the cost of operating the system within Richfield. We talked a little bit about the water service. This was a little bit of a surprise, I think, to some folks at the Wednesday listening session. Water is in the blue. It's going to come basically from Rockfield Road where the tower is to the west into the service area here. And then it's going to come down through the Freistad area and connect ultimately with our system at Golden Dale and Freistad Road. Water service is capped at 1.1 million gallons maximum flow per day. Customers would pay 100% of the rates as set by PSC. Sewer service, we don't need to loop, typically don't loop. That is the green. It just basically comes down through the Freistad area and connects again at Golden Dale and Freistad. Maximum capacity there is 0.7 million gallons per day. And the customers pay a rate of 120%. The one change that we have to the agreement that I think folks in the audience may have some interest in. Originally, what you see on the map here is that the agreement, as it related to that $50,000 private well escrow, was a half mile around the well, which is basically that red circle in the middle that you see there. We've heard some suggestion that you maybe go out to a mile instead. You see that that's the blue circle that's there. The agreement, kind of hearing some of the comments that we received at the, at the last meeting, you see that it does primarily cut off that kind of corner of the subdivision there. In addition, there's a handful of houses in this area as well that weren't part of it. What we did is we instead changed the defined term to include basically just this box instead. That would then include that complete subdivision. We also pick up the couple houses here. That does mean that there are a couple places that are not covered by the escrow. There is a house that is here, an old farmhouse. That land is presently owned by a developer. It is no longer the old farm, farmer that is there. And then likewise, there are two homes along Rockfield Road. One kind of in this general area, I think it is, and one right next to our well. That wouldn't be included as part of that. The reality is, is that if either of those individuals were to experience problems, it would probably make more sense just to connect them to the system that'll be in the road in front of their house than to continue to deal with their well at that point. Likewise, when we look at whether or not you do the green box versus going to one mile, going to one mile effectively just creates the question of where do you stop? You know, so for example, you look here and you pick up the first couple houses in the subdivision that is right along Holy Hill Road here. You know, at that point, we get the argument that, well, why don't you just include the whole subdivision? And, you know, at some point, you just need to make a distinction as to where folks are likely going to be impacted based on the initial kind of assertion that we'd look at. That half mile, we adjusted to cover the most likely affected individuals based on that ascertainment. As it relates to the $50,000, you know, the reality is, is that the well is there. The well is going to operate, whether it provides service to Richfield or not. The problems associated with that well are going to exist either way. With that in mind, I would submit, number one, that entering into the IGA may be better than not as it relates to the private wells in that area because at least we have some funds with which to deal with the circumstance that are not our funds. Likewise, if you are Richfield, you know, we've talked about the fact that we don't know whether or not the water coming from that well is going to go to Richfield or to Germantown. It all goes into the system. Richfield, you know, when we negotiated that point, raised the idea that how do you know that it is our flow that is causing the problems associated with these wells? In this case, the $50,000 really does amount to it's better than nothing. And, you know, it was, it was added to try to address the concerns should they arise. Obviously, as we've previously talked about, we don't think there's going to be problems. We've drawn down. We did a 72-hour test where you pumped the heck out of the well and there were minimal impacts to the wells there. Obviously, that could change tomorrow. We could have a drought and, you know, everything could dry up. In which case, we're going to be in a world of hurt too because we're in that same aquifer. So, it, you know, there are never any certainties. But the $50,000 was really just designed to be, you know, let's get something just in case. So, with that, I know Director Reticek has some comments as well.
As Larry comes up, I just want to add something to your statement that we would be in a world of hurt too. We still have 11 other wells and probably two or three other aquifers that we pull from. So, even though it would impact the well and I'm sure the whole system so that there would be watering bans and whatever we've had in the past and droughts in the past, it's not going to take us to where we're zero capacity.
So, I'm just going to be up here just for a short time to clarify some points. I wanted to point out that the road to actually getting to be, having a well 12 or the elevated tank, I'm not going to go down the whole left side of my screen here, my slide. But basically, the left side is starting with when we got the well site donated to us by the Zober Corp. when TID8 was formed. We submitted to the. the Zober Corp. When today it was formed, we submitted to the DNR for permission and review to have that site approved as a well site. Shallow, deep, pink, blue, they have to review the site. They do a wellhead protection review. That started in March of 2019. We began, I'm going to skip down to the bottom, we began drilling the well in May of 2021. It takes that long to go through the governmental approvals, to have the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources approve it. The PSC had to review and approve the tank and the booster station. So there are a lot of government agencies involved in getting to that end. So we started drilling in May of 21. We had a bid out, as everybody's aware, as a deep well. And that is because you can never go and predict where a shallow well that would have enough volume for a municipal source would exist. It's impossible. They graft the fissures in the rock. They have areas where they can see it off from planes, and still it's really a hit or miss. If you're going to hit a vein of fissure that's large enough to supply the well, a municipal well is required to have. So we started drilling this as a deep well, and we approved, it was approved as a deep well. We got down to 420 feet, and when we hit about the 250-foot mark, the welldriller noticed that the water in the casing being drilled came up higher. So there was a source of water all of a sudden that was unexpected, very unusual. So at 420 feet, we stopped, and we did an initial test. They have a way of pumping with the, with air in a pump, and we did initial test of, I think it was like 320 gallons a minute for four hours for the DNR, and that tested out favorably. At that point, we brought the possibility of a shallow well on July 7th and 21 to a Public Works Highway Committee and informed that as of that night, we were already doing some of that initial testing. At that point, we knew a cost would be an order change order. One was brought forward, and there was a cost to do the testing of 800 gallons a minute for 72 hours. That started on July 7th through the 8th, 9th. Testing was favorable. The water dropped only 21 feet on our well, and the private wells that were monitored dropped 78 feet. On September 7th, applications were made to the DNR for the shallow well, and on September 7th, the DNR approved it as a shallow well. There were many, many studies, reports done through this whole testing procedure. On October 15th, we brought change order again to the Public Works Committee, the Zone Public, to approve change order two was to modify the deep well to the shallow limestone well. On December 8th, again, we brought the change order to the Public Works Committee, change order three, which approved the grouting addition to the extra cost, and that was for the DNR to confirm that our shallow well would be separated from the deep well. They don't want the wells to intermingle. Again, this year's February 2nd, brought the final change order four to adjust for final quantities, which was actually a reduction of $36,000. Shifting from the deep well to the shallow well required notification to the DNR in writing. Wisconsin DNR issued directions, very, very direct, very specific directions that's required to do the performance testing. At that point, FOTH Engineer was our consulting firm, and they hired the firm of Collier Consulting, which is well-known in the well industry. We had two experts. We had Ted Powell, who is a professional geologist, and Mr. John Jansen, who I'm not sure what all his stipulations are, but he's very well certified in wells. So we were accused of not having geologists on site. We had two plus the engineering firm of FOTH Engineers. Also involved with the well going shallow well, Dr. Sherkower seemed to be from, he's a professor at UWM. He, I think he helps Richfield out with their wells, but he was contacting us concerned of the well we were putting in. Two to three hour runtime only at 800 gallons a minute. The average drawdown on the private wells will be one and a half to two and a half feet.
Set daily.
The well could run at the beginning not frequently enough, but it could run to two times a day, is what's estimated right now, depending on the volume of use. There's a fire. Yep, bottom cycle here. So then there was a report that was written, it's called the Balance Impact Evaluation Report that Collier wrote, and I'm going to read directly from their reports, a quote, "Based on the results obtained from the 71-hour pumping test activities, Collier believes that a production dolomite aquifer well completed in the well 12 borehole location will pose little threat of imposing adverse effects on neighboring residential wells when pumped on a schedule similar to the schedule discussed in the previous section." And that was 48 hours per cycle, one to two cycles per day at 800 gallons a minute. The pump will never run to 48 hours. It'll overfill the tower at that point. It's expected that residential wells recover quickly at the end of a well cycle, well 12 cycle. Recovery time would be about two to three hours. Should come back to its previous elevation prior to well 12 running. Excuse me. There were statements made about the capacity of Germantown's sanitary sewer system, that Richfield would overburden the system. I'll show you some statistics here. So Richfield is allowed, the maximum they're allowed to put into our system is 0.7 million gallons per day of their peak flow and 0.4 million gallons per day of the average flow. So the peak flow is, the average flow is where it'll come out from the businesses or the residences on a regular hourly basis. The peak flow is any entering of clear water from stormwater or any other drains that may enter the system. Capacity of the Village of Germantown Sanitary Sewer Pipe on Freistad Road is 5.39 million gallons per day at the peak flow. Richfield uses 13% of that pipe capacity. Germantown's 48-inch interceptor sewer that empties into the MMSD has a capacity of 22.5 billion gallons per day with average flow. Richfield's flow that we allow them is 0.4 billion gallons per day average flow. They use 1.8% of our capacity. Currently, Germantown's interceptor sewer flows at an average rate of 2.6 million gallons per day. It has a capacity of 22.5 million gallons per day. Germantown's interceptor remaining capacity is at 19.5 million gallons per day, and that would be after considering Richfield's flow coming into it.
So then with that, the last, just kind of brief thing I want to touch on is the very thing I said I promised I would touch on, which is referendums and whether or not, you know, how that all works. In short, in order to, we'll just start with the basics. In order to do a referendum, we need to have at least 70 days' notice before the election for which that could happen. So in essence, you could start anywhere, starting from today, and then you would go to about the May 16th meeting. That meeting would really be the last meeting that we could use if we wanted to hold the referendum on the August 9th primary date to try to kind of reduce our costs a little bit by piggybacking on an existing election. The statutes are not 100% clear. The league seems to suggest that, in a couple of their opinions, that the state wouldn't really allow us to hold a referendum between that primary and the November general. So you kind of then run from a period from about May 16th to August 15th, where you could direct that we're going to hold a referendum, but that referendum then would be on the November 8th, general election date that was there. If we didn't piggyback on one of those two elections, we wanted to just hold a special election all by ourselves, where that was the only item on the ballot, we could do that. Madam Clerk, I think if I have been told correctly, that the estimated cost to that is about $15,000?
I was doing some rough estimates at about $15,000, and then I confirmed costs with the county clerk for programming and ballots today. So I was, that's a very good ballpark of where that would be to include election officials as well as the equipment, programming, and then the ballots themselves.
Okay. So that's kind of the basics in terms of what type of referendum would be there. Effectively, what the statutes tell us is that there are only certain things for which there are, you know, the kind of binding referendum. One example, as it relates to a village, would be if we did a charter ordinance where we were going to change something that deviated from what the statutes tell us otherwise. You know, for, as an example, we wanted to change the number of people on our plan commission to something that is different than what the statute tells us it needs to do. We could do that by charter ordinance. By charter ordinance, there could be a petition after we pass that ordinance, wherein the voters could tell us, nope, you need to submit that to the electorate, and then the results of that are binding. Likewise, there is a direct legislation process. That direct legislation process really isn't probably applicable here, because as its name kind of implies, it deals with legislative-type determinations, not administrative or, you know, other types of non-legislative-type determinations. But that would be another example of where you would have a binding referendum, the results of that. The statutes and the court cases and the league opinions all kind of concur that outside of those instances where you have a binding referendum, what you have is just an advisory referendum at that point. It is something that is submitted for interest. I'm going to get to you in a second. And as it relates to Richfield, I kind of had a feeling this was going to come up, so I kept one of our slides from the last time. The language of the Richfield code there is kind of hard to read, but if we read through that, I don't read the language of that to suggest that it is binding. I don't know whether they would consider that to be binding or not from their end. Certainly, the language, the term binding does not appear within the code, which is, you know, kind of one area where you would look to see whether that is done. Likewise, as I talked about on Wednesday, as part of that process, you know, remember that that's just a code section. They could change that tomorrow if they wanted to with just a majority vote of their board. There is nothing that says that if they decided they really wanted to expand service beyond the, you know, area that is east of 175, that they could do that tomorrow without going to referendum. There may be political costs to that, but at least in terms of whether it could be done, it certainly could be. Now, Trustee Peiper had a question, I believe.
Yes. So please let me know if I'm understanding you correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong. If our residents put together a petition asking this to go to a binding referendum, is that an option?
Nope. Even if we had a petition to hold a referendum, that referendum would only be an advisory referendum. There is no such thing as a binding petition referendum in Wisconsin. There is, if that petition was a direct legislation petition, then it would be binding, but if it's not, which this wouldn't be, then it's just an advisory referendum at that point.
So if we would have a referendum to place or not, that we're going here, this is an example, a wheel tax to help cover the cost of road repair, that could be a binding referendum?
Or not. That, I mean, part of it would depend on the question at some point, but yes, that would typically be a binding referendum, because that would involve the enactment of some sort of legislation in order to accomplish that goal. Whereas here, it's, you know, should we serve Richfield or not, is basically the question.
You have other questions, Trustee Peiper?
Not yet.
Okay, good. I just want to, don't want to interrupt. I got a little lost, and it's not unusual. When you were saying the March to 2000, you know, March 20th or whatever, to August 9th, is that in order to get it on the August 9th primary election date, whether there be a primary or not? And would it still cost $15,000 if it would be on a, what would be considered a scheduled election day?
Sure. So taking into account that 70-day notice that we have to provide, the last dates, and I think if I remember right, that I used just the standard village board dates or the scheduled dates. So the last village board date that we could potentially pass a resolution that says we want to have a referendum on the August 9th primary date would be the May 16th meeting.
I got it. All right. Oh, I understand. Any other questions or comments in regards to the information that's been shared? Trustee Baum? Then I'll go to Phil. I'm sorry.
Madam Clerk, can you tell me what the general election turnout percentage is? We have large elections, we have small elections. I know there's drastic numbers.
When you say general election, do you mean a November presidential or governor election? Or do you mean?
Both, because a president, president or governor gubernatorial election will turn out a larger group, but the election we're going to have tomorrow is going to turn out a small group. What are our numbers for turnouts?
Correct. So tomorrow's election, I'm expecting approximately 30% voter turnout. However, for a November-type election, you're talking upwards of 90% voter turnout.
Based on the last one?
Based on the last one, yes. Thank you.
Village Administrator?
Thank you. Just actually, two quick pieces of information in response to a couple of questions that were new tonight. One related to the savings from changing from a deep well to a shallow well. That was a little bit under $1 million in savings for the construction of the well. And where that money went, actually on the agenda tonight, you'll see the borrowing authorizations for this year. That'll include borrowing for the cost of the well construction, and that number is a little bit less than $1 million lower than it would have been if we had gone forward with the deep well. So that explains where that money was. And the other, unless the board is interested, we won't go into a great deal of detail on this, but the question of the tower in the status, that change order was approved. The Public Director submitted additional information to the DNR. They have to approve the, they also have to approve the change in the tower height. That's currently in review, and that's why the construction is on hold until those approvals are received from the DNR.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. So we've had our additional information presented to us. We've had the opportunity for additional questions from the board in regards to that new information, except for Trustee Myers, who has his hand up. Trustee Myers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, my question to you is, the state of Wisconsin has 80 different referendums from the different school systems in regard to building and so on and so forth. Are you saying all of those are non-binding?
No, certainly. An example of binding referendums would be all of those school district referendums where you're looking to expand, or to, effectively what those referendums do is to exceed the levy limit that otherwise is, you know, imposed upon that particular district or community. And the referendum is not to spend the money or to do anything necessarily. It's to get the authorization to exceed that levy limit. And so it's, arguably, you could have the referendum that says, yes, we're going to authorize you to exceed that limit, and then still ultimately, you know, you get your bids back and say, ooh, that's too expensive. We're not going to do it. And then you just wouldn't do it. It's fairly unusual to have a referendum that would be specifically that, you know, we're going to agree to spend... we're going to agree to spend $70,000 to do X. You don't see those types of referendums. The referendums typically are based on the levy limit that comes in. Does that make sense?
Yes, Brian, thank you. Board? Ready for motion? Ready for whatever you got?
Motion made, need a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Trustee Peiper?
Thank you. All right. None of the residents that I have even spoken to or who have made comments on the map online on the 20, for the 2050 plan, not one of them said that they want any more industrial development by Holy Hill Road. Not one. We don't need to manage the development growth because we don't want it. Not there, the residents, and I support them in this. We sure as heck can stop development. The residents just did it here the last week, and they'll continue to do so, and I encourage them to do so because your voice, that's what we hear. Look at this room. This is what we want. If nobody comes to speak against it, what are we supposed to think? The feedback from the residents has been consistent and undivided on this topic. No. Are we as a board really going to convey a message that we know what's best for the residents? We represent them. We need to listen to what they want. No, I'm not done yet. I'm not quite sure why, well, actually, I do, I can assume why Washington County is acting like rest Putin in the background, offering an abundance of money for this to happen, but they won't offer any assistance or financial help so we can rebuild our downtown or redevelop our downtown or fix our roads where we really need the funds. Enough is enough. The residents have spoken, and we are called to represent them. I want to remind you guys of that, trustees. If you have heard from one resident that is in favor of this, that came and spoke to you, please let me know, because I got about 40 emails, five phone calls, all asking me, please don't vote yes, please vote no. I'm going to listen to my people. I hope you guys do.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the village of Richfield for sewer and water services. Trustee Jan Miller?
I would like to concur with Trustee Peiper. I have gotten nothing but emails, thank you, phone calls, I appreciate that, not only from residents in District 4, which I represent and live in, but from other districts. I do try to respond to everyone. That is our goal, and it should be our goal to respond to everyone. We are sitting here with our 2022 goal in communication, and I feel that there are times when we lack getting the word out for residents to come in and be heard. President Walter has said, oh gee, I wish all meetings were like this with all the seats filled up, well, we're doing it.
Especially at budget time.
And then you're welcome at budget time as well. So you are here. You elected us. We are your employees, and we need to listen to every, all of your concerns. And I think the biggest concern that I've heard here is that, what about this? There seems to be a gaping hole. How did the water tower get extended? What about the parts per billion gallons of sewer that are coming back? Are we really going to get how much money? And the money that we get, the 20% that your, Richfield has generously shown us, is only going to support regular maintenance. We do not get, it's not going to help us expand. I don't believe it. And so I, I have to take into consideration all the things that all these keen, intelligent residents are coming forward and saying, hey, I know, I have lived here. We want you to continue to live here in Germantown, and Germantown is a great town. So, and we have, clearly, I think there are some gaps in our, really, our working on this project, the whole project, and getting the information out to you. Only last week did we get some real numbers out to you, and we need to do a better job. So I hear you, and you said vote no, so let's vote no.
Further discussion? Trustee Hudson?
Thank you. I wrote down some thoughts. I'd like to take a moment of time to thank my fellow citizens who contacted village board members or came to one of the listening sessions. In order for our village to reach its full potential, we need to carefully listen to those whom our decisions will most affect. While we, while we may not all have the same opinions and ideas, every person deserves to have their voice respectfully heard. A few short weeks ago, our village board adopted goals for 2022. These goals are based on feedback received from our citizens and challenges that the village board perceives exists. Two of the most important goals the village board identified are building trust and better communication with our citizens. Trust and communication are pillars upon which quality government is built. The Germantown Village Board acknowledged that these are areas where we can do better. This vote will be an indication as to whether we are going to work to build trust and communication in our village, or whether we are going to set lofty goals and simply give them lip service. On the issue of selling water to Richfield, our citizens have overwhelmingly asked us to reject this agreement. The voices of our residents are crystal clear. My intention is to listen to what our citizens desire. I urge each board member to listen to what our citizens desire.
Further discussion? Trustee Baum?
One of the questions I asked this past week, past few days, was what is the failure rate that is caused by municipal wells? The response I got was that we couldn't find documentation on well failure rates. Would that be a fair statement of what was given? In summary?
I did, I reached out to the DNR. They, they don't have anything related to municipal wells. And, you know, they did indicate that was something that they were starting to track, but they did not have information on failure rates due to municipal wells. There's scattered research on it due to other types of high-impact wells.
So I hear a lot of concern about the failure of wells. I've heard some people talk about, yes, they know of failed wells, they know no history about why these wells failed. Was it just were old, or were they impacted by something? We had comments about Tom Hignite's wells doing something. The village did start three wells and gave them up because they did appear to start affecting other wells. I'm just not sure how dangerous our wells really are. So I'm questioning that. I'd like more information on that. Second thing is, I have heard from those who want this to go through. People that own land out there, that are developers, farmers, they're looking to retire, they want to sell off their property, they are looking for the developers to come in and buy it. Yes. So there are people who do want this to go through. You're not hearing them voice their opinions. Some of them are here tonight, I've talked to them, but they do, there are people that do want this to go through. You're just not hearing from them. So. The involvement of trying to get people's input, we have one person here that says we should have a 60% response from the village. Tomorrow's election day, and we're only looking for 30% turnout in that election. If it's a presidential or gubernatorial election, we could get into the high 90s. What would a referendum be? Would that be, what we would target would be on a presidential or senatorial election? What is that election date?
It would depend on when you wanted to hold it. Options that would exist at this moment would be a special election where this would be the only item on the ballot. I would anticipate that 30% turnout is probably high even for that. If you went to the, the August primary, a lot of that will depend on what types of primaries exist, if any. You know, there may not be any, potentially. And so I would anticipate typically primary turnout, Madam Clerk, is fairly low, typically two.
It is also generally low. 30% might be very hopeful for a primary as well.
Right. And then you would have your November general election as an option. November is not a governor race, nor is it a presidential race. So I would anticipate that you would have something that is probably a little bit higher than 30%, but probably nowhere near the 90% that you would see in either of those races.
Governors on November.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
And also, there would be seats in the Senate and also in the House.
Right.
So we have talked about in various meetings the pros and cons of this decision, and there's definitely equal pros and cons from my perspective, and I have been not only straddling the fence, but lately standing on top of the fence trying to figure out where to go with this because I see both sides of the discussion. While I was hoping to get more information from all the listening sessions, I didn't get as much as I was hoping for. The, I would like to point out that a couple of people said, we're not responding to you. Judy, I never got an email from you. I got three from your daughter, and I've been going back and forth with your daughter all day. I didn't get yours, but I got your daughter's. Julie, I didn't get any of yours either. Where'd you go? Somewhere back there. I didn't get any of your emails either. So. I did? Okay. I don't see it on my computer today, so.
Was it been late at night?
Could be. I was asleep at that time. So another point is, what was, what was my last point that I wanted to make? I'll come back to it, I'll think about it while somebody else is talking.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Trustee Nireiter, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, this is a tough issue to decide on. I'll be real honest with you. First of all, I appreciate too, all the people that have come forward at meetings or through emails, phone calls, or whatever, to express their views. That's definitely what we want. When I, excuse me, when I look at this, I kind of, you know, I can see both sides of the issue here. First of all, the people that are concerned about their wells and our precious resource of water, I can certainly sympathize with you on that. That is a big concern, and it's probably something that wasn't adequately addressed in this agreement going forward. And that's not to pick on the people from Richfield or the people on Germantown that negotiated this. There's a lot of things that go into this. I don't think you can go find a standard agreement from a lot of municipalities that are sharing water or sharing septic. I was trying to look today at the Village of Sussex and the Town of Lisbon as one area, but that really didn't play into effect here. So have there been some mistakes made with the, with the well and the shallow well or whatever? I guess our staff here did the best that they did through the advice that they got from various state agencies or whatever. And, you know, I, for one, support what they came forward with, but I'm not saying that that has to be the end. The agreement that's here, when you read it through, and I too, I read it through this morning again one more time, the procedure that would be needed to enforce this really isn't properly in there. And who's responsible for what? There's a lot of gray area in this, in this agreement, and I think that's something that needs to be defined because I concur that, okay, if I have a well problem, I can't wait, you know, until the next election, or I can't wait until we come before the board. There has to be a group that they would immediately come to. And the same thing goes with, how do you, how do you prove, and I'm not an expert, how do you prove that a well, excuse me, a water tank or whatever was damaged by a well? A lot of people could have older tanks, whatever, that are probably on their last lives. So how do we know that? So I really think there has to be better guidelines defined if we're going to do that. Where do residents really go with a problem? You know, they can't come storming in here to the village administrator and expect to get an immediate answer or whatever. But I think too, that the board also needs to be informed, if this were to go through, the board does need to be informed on a, probably on a quarterly basis, as to how this is going. Is the $50,000 enough? No, I agree it's not. I think it's a, it's a good offer. After reading and looking at the situation with the other wells, I think Germantown does bear some brunt of also having to put some money forward or having some plan in place to fix those wells, as well as does Richfield. And whether 50,000 is enough or not, I don't know that. Or do you replenish that 50,000 every time it's used for the life, which could be 15 to 20 years? The, the business itself, the one thing I've always been disappointed in is that we've really never been able to realize, we've heard the rumors, who it is that's coming in here. I'd be willing to bet Richfield knows, but cannot say. And I think that would help also. And I, I think from an economic development standpoint, if they're talking about 1,500 to 2,000 workers, you're probably talking on recruiting workers from here as far north up to Fond du Lac, because Richfield is not going to be able to provide all those workers. Germantown is not going to be able to provide all those workers. But it's going to give a great impact in this area. And the spillover effect, I know there's been a lot of questions on that, a lot of comments on that. I truly feel there will be a spillover effect. Yes, it could put additional burden on our law enforcement, our fire departments, et cetera, it's possible. But I don't see it being a problem being over on the Richfield side. I don't think we can dictate and say, you know, it's going to be too noisy or whatever, or too big or whatever. I don't think that's for us to determine that. I think that's for Richfield to determine that. I think that's for Richfield to determine that. I, I really, you know, I really think that we have an opportunity here to work together with another municipality, with our neighboring municipality. And I, I think it's, you know, this time around, they're asking us for something. Maybe somewhere down the road, we're going to be asking them for some help. And not saying that, and knowing the leaders in Richfield, that they'd say, well, no, because you didn't give it to me, I'm not going to do it now. I think it's really important though, that we work together. And whether, excuse me, whether we agree with Josh Shulman's ideas, et cetera, I, I think that's out of, not part of that question here. I think the big part of the question is here, is getting an agreement that I think still needs a lot of work. I don't think we have a finished agreement. And I also, I also concur that, that part of the 2050 Plan, that area, which is in my district, certainly needs to be looked at. And I applaud the people that have made a lot of comments on that. And I'm sure we'll see you all on April 11th. So I, I personally tonight would not vote yea or nay on this thing. What I, personally, I would really like to see is define some of those areas that really need to be looked at and addressed properly. And again, no fault of anybody that worked on this. This is not an easy document to do. You don't do these every day. But if there's a possibility that it can work, and as, as Trustee Baum was mentioning, those people in that area, that would be serviced. You know, I know money isn't everything, but seven to nine million dollars, think about that. That's a huge impact, especially today with where we're at. So I guess, I guess I'd have a hard time voting yea or nay tonight. But I, I really do think there's, and I don't know what kind of time is left here. I don't know what kind of time Richfield has left to get an answer back to Mr. Hillsborough or whatever the name was. But if he's patient, you know, he's going to have to wait. But that would be my feeling is, let's address some of the things that really need to be looked at yet and get every question answered. So we, so maybe people will feel more comfortable. If they don't feel more comfortable with it, yeah, then I agree. Then it's time to say, okay, let's move on.
Do you have a short list of what those are?
Um, I could come up with it pretty quick.
Okay. Why don't you think about it and see if you got, come up with like, I don't know, three or four and, or whatever, two, whatever you think is, is top, top of the concern list. And I would be interested to know what that is. Further discussion. Trustee Rick Miller.
I'll be Trustee Kaminski for once. Yeah, thanks, thanks everyone for your emails, your phone calls, your participation in the last meetings and, and tonight. I was kind of like Trustee Baum. I had been standing on the fence all week, all month, looking at this. This all of a sudden became about the well rather than providing utilities to Richfield. And, you know, shame on us that something got in the way of the real reason that we're here. The well is a separate issue. I think we've addressed it as much as we can. I learned something tonight that yes, obviously we monitor our wells, our municipal wells. Richfield doesn't have municipal wells, so what can they do? They have to monitor private wells. So we are watching those wells and making sure that it isn't impacting on that. I can tell you right now, I am on a well. I am on a private well myself. I am .3 miles away from our largest water user in the village that uses a million gallons a day. I have never had an issue in 21 years. That doesn't mean that you won't. I'm just telling you that I don't have that, I don't have that issue and I never have. So when it comes to providing the utility to Richfield, I look back at some things that we've done in the past. And number one is that we've been providing water to Menominee Falls in a small area for 30 years, something like that. And that's the area where JCPenney is and Culvers and Pick and Save and Hobby Lobby and that. They just recently got off of that water because of an updated agreement in 2018 and that amendment pushed it down the road to the Capri Senior Community Development and Grace Lutheran Church. So now we are providing water to Menominee Falls, our pipes, our rates, and, and that's been going on for a long time. And that's until they don't want to do it anymore. They pay the same rates that we do. They don't pay a premium on the sewer or the water. I don't know all of it. That was again, 30 years ago. I wasn't even thinking about a village board position at that point. But, but that's, that sticks in my mind like, well, this isn't the first time we've done this. We have done this before and it's, I guess it's worked. I mean, nobody's even questioned it. Matter of fact, we did an amendment in 2018 and nobody questioned that. So this, this fence I'm, I'm on, the other one is the advantage of getting some infrastructure Best estimates are $9 million of infrastructure that, that we're talking about. That's, that's something that the, it's not a taxpayer issue, it's a utility user issue. Because that, that, that's all recouped by the utilities or paid for by the utilities. That's just the management of that portion of it. So that's the things I've been going back and forth on. I see all the people here in my district, District Two, and, you know, my decision is that I'm not going against you for the simple fact that like Trustee Knight Rider said, I don't think we're ready for this yet. I think there's some questions that need to be answered. I don't have probably as, as fast a questions as Trustee Knight Rider does, but I, I don't think we're ready to, to move forward with this yet. There's just too much, too many questions that, that have to be answered when it comes to this. I have talked to people who are in support of this, so it isn't just all negative. One of, I have a, a coworker that actually lives in the neighborhood just to the north and he moved in about a year ago and he's like, yeah, no big deal, you know? And maybe he doesn't know enough yet. I don't know. He, I have another person that I work with that lives in Renwood. He said, I don't see the issue, you know? Everybody gets their water fine. So it isn't all negative and I, I'm almost, I'm almost ready for a referendum on this. I mean, that might be the next step. That's where I'll leave it for now.
Trustee Kaminski.
You know, I didn't think I would come in here thinking I would want a referendum on this, but I, I do think it might be the most logical approach. I'm looking at this from a slightly different perspective. Again, understanding, nobody wants their well to go dry. I'm on a well too. I totally get that. But going back to the issue of supplying water, if we can do that and not affect you, I'll join the fence sitters, except I think I'm leaning over to the no side, frankly. Just hanging on to the fence with one hand. And my perspective on this is looking at some other letters we did receive. I would like to complete our TID district and our side of the business park first. I don't necessarily really want to see a, whatever it may be, but a gargantuan Amazon sized warehouse when I drive to work through Richfield down Holy Hill Road every morning. I don't think I want to deal with that traffic. I don't think I want to see something like that. Anything that gets developed on the west side of the interstate is going to vastly affect us here in Germantown. The police force, get ready to add a lot more police and firefighters. That's just minimal. And I guess, I just don't think we're getting enough for what we're giving. Water and stress on our Germantown village. We need a new park. We've been talking about, now if somebody wants to come in here from the county and bargain with us and give us a million dollars for some parkland, or they want to come in here and say, hey, look, we're going to help you build your new public works facility, which we desperately need, are going to borrow a lot of money for tonight. Give us the land for that. Buy that for us. Certainly this is a public works function. Now, I understand you can't do it if it's part of a TID district. That's what I've heard anyway. But, okay, county money isn't part of that. People, my constituents, and I'm not close to your area, so my constituents, when I talk to them about this, they're saying they really don't care. It doesn't affect them. Share the water if we have it. I'm getting more of that because they're not living where you live. But my point is, they're saying, what about the roads? What about the park? What about the other things we need? They can't see that pipe underground, that $9 million extension of water and sewer to the northeast, which is just going to make development happen faster. What they are saying is, we have a lot of development going on in this village. We have a lot of subdivisions going up and they are close to where I live. And we have the TID district to be completed. We have a lot going on and they're like tapping the brake a little bit, saying if this is going to make development even more extreme or happen faster, they're willing to hold off on it. And once you put that water and sewer line in up to Freistadt Road, you know that, that whole area is going to develop very quickly. Almost as soon as that water line goes in, you're going to have that property come into the plan commission and it's going to, it's going to pop. So my thing is, I don't know that I want to see things develop quite that quickly. I think we have a lot on our plate right now with the public work structure that's going up, completing our TID on our side of the interstate. I like to see all that happen first, get that completed, and then let's see what happens naturally with development on that northeast quadrant. Something will happen, maybe it ends up being another TID district, but I don't think it needs to be a concern for the next two to three years. I really don't. And then another, but might seem like kind of a minor thing, right now, the village of Germantown, I don't believe we have the staffing to handle this. We don't have staffing in place from the engineering perspective. We're using outside consultants, which is fine. We're managing that budget. But to all of a sudden, take on not just the public works facility, which hopefully will break ground on by the end of the year, not just that, but, and completing the TID district and all of the subdivisions that are going in, and now we're going to throw like a water sewer line going to the northeast corridor and watching all that bloom. I, I think it's, it's, the timing is, is just not really good. So anyway, from that perspective, I would like to see our side of the highway go ahead and develop. Let's finish our TID district. I'm not, I don't have a problem limiting northeast development by not getting that $9 million water sewer line. I'd like to take some of that money, if the county was nice enough to give it to us, help out with the public works department and give us a park. And so I think tonight, like I said, I'm hanging on by fingers on that fence. But if I voted on this tonight, I do believe I would say no.
Further discussion. Trustee Jan Miller.
To add to Trustee Kaminski's point about what we have unfinished, we just started implementing a new, uh, system, which includes the utility bills. Is that correct? And that is not going to be completed until mid-year-ish. Is that correct?
The utility billing, well, actually the first time that it will be used to issue bills to residents will be in the, in January of next year.
Okay, there we go. So we're taking on all this utility, want to get our money, and we had nothing but utility billing issues for the last two years. And I think that we should get our systems in order so that it would be, if it ever happened, which I'm not for, we have more than enough to chew on right now within our own village. But if we don't have the systems to back us, get information we need about our current residents and then take on more, because we were going to take on the billing if I'm not mistaken, is that right, of Richfield? So now we're adding on 11,000 more people or 10,000 more peo, 10, five? What, what are we talking about? A very small parcels. Okay. But still, it would be a major industrial. Okay. But it's still, it's still billing. And if we're, we're relying on a 20% increase on the sewer, okay. But if we don't have a system that doesn't work, we won't, we won't have the gains.
We, we might by July. So I don't think this would be in and the bills would start going out in July over to the Richfield side. But I understand your concern.
I, I'll believe it when I see it. So I, I, I think a pause or just, let's, let's not even do this because we have too much to tackle. DPW has to be done. We're looking at hiring four new police people. We, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of things. So we want to be safe. We want to be courteous. We like Richfield. But I, I, I think we're, uh, we're, we don't want to over promise and under deliver. And that's where I think we are right now. Thank you.
Further discussion. Trustee Myers, you're the only one that hasn't kicked in yet. I've gone around at least once with everybody. I'll give you opportunity before we start doing second passes.
Pass.
Okay. Before we go into further second passes, I've got a couple of points and it's been a very good discussion. It's been a very good debate. Everyone's brought up a lot of things I haven't thought of and I, and I also appreciate everybody that's in the room that's been working on this and have commented on it. Some of the things that I've written down for notes as we've gone through this, and it's not a plus or a minus, it's just facts and just points. So I've got them down to about five or six. Part of the reasons of, that this is a plus side is there's additional monies to cover the cost for long-term maintenance of sewer and water in the infrastructure, not only for our entire system, but also for the newer system going up Goldendale Road. There is a fair amount of expanse between Freistadt Road and Holy Hill Road that isn't sewered. And that was, costs will become real in regards to maintenance to start with. You have to look at long-term, 20 to 30 years out, which I always try to do, and that would start to cover replacement of infrastructure, but that fund can be, get built over time. But immediately, we have regular maintenance where they have to go in and jet out areas. They have to clean sumps. They have to make sure grates are clean. A lot of stuff falls in the sewer and you got to clean it out at least once a year. And there's a whole schedule of when they do certain parts of the village throughout. Right, Tim? Thank you. So I like it for that reason. It's a plus. Another plus is we get a seat at the table for input and some minimal control of the projects in their northeast corridor. Without the IGA, we have no say. We have no say, we have no control. We can't even tell them that we'd like most of that traffic to head north and come onto 4145 instead of coming south on the Holy Hill Road or further down onto Freistadt Road. Here, we have a say. We have a say at the table. We have a seat at the table. We have some input into what can be developed on the Richfield side. Not total control, but input. Without it, we have none. It covers the, the cost of infrastructure for future development along the 4145 corridor, $9 million that we would not have to borrow for or tax for or take from our utility for future development, including a road that has part of the right of way being covered by Richfield. That is a decent amount to consider when you look at growth that we know is going to occur in that corridor. A lot of the concerns of the residents were brought forward within all our listening sessions, our public hearings and meetings like this. Thank you. First of all, thank you for that, for getting involved, for writing, for taking the time and coming to the meetings. I know it's brutal to sit here in the audience because some meetings are brutal to sit here. But many times, you know, you have other things that you need to do and you have to do for your family. And I appreciate all the time taken to give us your input. But a lot of the immediate concerns of the well, I think they've been kind of addressed in some way or another in regards to running them dry or how we went about, the, the process that we went about for going shallow to deep. And with that, that information's been shared with the board and, and I think they've learned a lot of things as well. The well cost, the water use, the impact on, on residential wells and the infrastructure of, of what it took to get there. Now, many people have said that, why would we give nine people the ability to make a decision for 22,000? And that's unfair, but it's a representative government and that's what we're here to do, is to make the tough decisions for you with your input. If you want to go with the percentage game, there's only a small percentage of the 22,000 residents that we've heard from. So I don't want to play that game. It's important to you, you're here, I'm listening. Next area's been discussed is good neighbor. We should be a good neighbor to Richfield. Everybody here, every one of you, because I have your literature at home, ran on your seat about shared services with local communities. Everybody did. Because it's a great buzz point. Everybody did, because it's a great buzz point. Here, we've got to look at other communities and how we can share services and how we can come together to help offset some costs. And I see Phil's shaking his head, so maybe I don't have anything on you, Phil, because you really didn't have to run against everybody. So I'll take the broad brush and I'll say most of you have put that into your literature. This is that opportunity of sharing services and offsetting those costs, and it's not just for sewer and water. It goes and can be extended to the library. They don't have a library. We do. We're looking for ways to put growth into our library. What better way than for Richfield to become some of our users of our library so that we can grow it and afford what it takes to put in a second story? Shared fire service, police service. If you've looked at our local newspaper, you've seen the struggles that Richfield has with their fire service. It's paid on call. We've been there, and we've gone through our process to get more full-time firefighters. There's an ability for us to share services up in that corridor because they're first there. We got to come from down here to get there, they're already in that area, so they could get there a little bit quicker in regards to this side of the freeway to help share those services. And that goes for police as well, because maybe we could start looking at some additional policing through the county sheriff. When we're looking at county services, maybe we ask the county sheriff to help us up in that area too, because we know we're extended, and we know, as the police chief has come forward before, that we're only able to get to so many places in so much of a shift during so much time during the week. It's limited, but we're looking to add that. And we've heard the discussion of referendum. It'll definitely help put the matter to bed. So if we don't go to referendum and we continue down this discussion, it'll come up again. We've heard that they might go to, over to Jackson and talk to them. Sure, they can do that, and they could do that now. But if it's not put to bed in some way or another in regards to referendum for the whole village to have input on it, or whoever comes to that election, it'll always be out there kind of hanging out, and it'll come back again. So Germantown reserves to cover the cost of the wells impacted by well number 12, I'm willing to look at an amendment to place $100,000 from Germantown reserves, because we have reserves that we've been beneficial in getting through additional monies through permitting, and that would help cover the wa- cover the areas that we've designated for the wells impacted, the residential wells impacted by well number two. Now, that's within reason, and when I say within reason, I don't mean you need to give me your lawyer's terms of why your well failed, but I think it should be, the number one reason should be drop in the water aquifer so that you have to do something to your well to reach it again, whether it's drilling it, setting the pump lower, or something along those lines. But I'm not going to replace your pump if it's 50 years old, or I'm not going to, you know, or if your casing caves in, that's not an impact of well number 12, that's an impact of your well being 20, 30, 40 years old. So it's in within reason, but we have those monies available, and if you want to put your mouth, or your money where your mouth is, there it is. We're willing to put $100,000, or whatever you want in, within reason, up against the covering of any of these wells in the area that's been designated. Now, I've heard two avenues within that first and once around. The two avenues I heard is referendum, or address the top concerns, and we should come back later. All right, Board? Which direction? We have, we have a motion out there, and we have our first round and a half of discussion. Where do you want to take it? Do you want to take it to top five topics, or do you want to take it to referendum? And that requires an amendment. So where do you want to go from here? Because we could talk about it for another half hour, easy, and I'll get to you in a minute, but I'm looking for a direction so that we can move this to some direction so these people can go home, because it's becoming later, and then we can decide how we want to handle this, either through a referendum or to ask for additional information, and if we're going to do that to staff, I want a list. I don't want this, we want you to give us more information. I want a list of what your top concerns are so they know what to go to and how to address it. Don't raise your hand, because we're not in discussion, and I have the floor. I'm looking for an amendment or something, so Board, it's up to you.
I thought there was a motion on the floor.
There's a motion, but I'm looking for a motion to amend, to move it in a direction, because I've heard two directions from the discussion we've had so far. Discussion one, or one area that you want to move it to, is I've heard referendum amongst two or three of you. And another one I heard from trustee Nyreiter and from trustee Miller is there's some additional concerns that need to be addressed so that these people are more comfortable in regards to the questions they have about sharing these services, one way or the other. So, or we can just go through to a vote right now, whatever you like.
How's the referendum?
Yes.
How does that serve Richfield if we don't have a referendum until November?
It would be August.
You're saying it would be August?
Or special election, or special election. We can have one in August as part of the normal election process, because a primary, if there is a primary required, would happen in August. Or it can go to November, or you can schedule a special election. Referendum, I'm sorry. Or a special election for the referendum, which would be at a cost of $15,000 to $16,000. You've got your hand up. Who did I say I was going to get to first? Oh, I want to go over here to Mr. Jeffords. You need to come up to the front though, sir, I'm sorry.
Mr. President, I would, I heard your amendment, and if you choose to add to it, we would be willing to work with Germantown to add monitoring system to one of the private wells.
Okay.
That would be with Well Intel. That is the company that we use. We have something like 30 wells that we monitor in the graveld area, and so it's a, like your monitoring of your tank well, it would move the monitoring away from the tank to one of the residences, or a couple of them, whatever we work out, and be another line of warning as to, because this is, this is done in real time, and so that would be available to the village to know that there's an issue close by.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And in terms of, I think there was a question concerning the timing of the referendum, and with our need for a decision, because we do have some timing issues that we have to address, and I would prefer, we would prefer that we work with Germantown. It's better for everybody financially, and certainly when we talk about trying to control growth, if we make, bring the sewer and water down from Jackson, that growth will follow that pipe all the way down into the northern sector, and there would be much more of it that would be uncontrolled, along with the fact issuing the traffic. We don't know, I don't know what kind of buildings are going in there, but that traffic's going to be there anyway. Can't stop it. And the growth's going to be there anyway, and you can't stop it.
But you can manage it.
Together and manage it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Further discussion. Trustee Peiper.
The deadliest stretch of highway in Washington County is at Holy Hill and 4145. You put a huge Amazon-like facility there? With increased traffic, you're going to increase the amount of deaths that happen there each year. You can't control the traffic by not having it there.
Trustee Peiper, I think that we've heard some information presented that the Department of Transportation recognizes the issues that they have in that part of the 4145 corridor and are looking at plans currently of how to improve it and also to enhance that Holy Hill interchange, at the cost of, of shared cost of Richfield and Germantown and whatever improvements they would make there. They're going to make them anyways based on the development that's already there. So those, those things are already in action, and I think they're recognized, but I do appreciate you bringing the point forward. Village Administrator.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out in the process that we've had a series of MOUs that, that we've used, that we've come into agreement with Richfield on as we've gone through this process of negotiations and research and learning more about the possibilities. The last MOU that, that we entered into ended on, on March 31st, and as part of that agreement, for example, when we were doing engineering research or other things, Richfield has been paying for those, those expenses moving forward. So as we've set those timelines and we've extended that, that negotiation process twice, the feedback that we have gotten from Richfield is that time is of the essence, and, you know, if the, if the decision of the village board is to pursue a referendum, you know, staff, I would go back and try to reopen the MOU, but I, and I don't know what the answer would be, but I do feel it's important to point that out, that I don't know what the answer to that would be. And a lot of that is going to depend on, on what agreements the developer has in place and what the developer's timeline looks like, and that is something to, to take into consideration.
Further discussion. Trustee Jan Miller.
If there are timelines in place, then I think Richfield needs to make a decision. It can wait for a referendum or whatever this board decides to do, because all we're looking at right now, in my viewpoint, is a phantom developer. He's a phantom developer, and we've got a zombie that's trying to come to life.
Thank you, Dan.
So I, I think if you need to make a decision, there was Jackson you put out there, you looked at it yourselves, maybe you want to own the, your own sewer and water. Maybe you do. Maybe Washington County wants to help.
I don't think so.
That, that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion. Trustee Myers.
Are you looking for amendments?
I'm scared, I'm sorry?
Are you looking for amendments to the motion?
I'm looking, you know, I can't say to you that I want you to make this amendment. I've thrown out several suggestions of amendments that I would support. One is, from the comments that I've heard, it's either we address concerns, there seems to be a top level of concerns, a list of three or five or six, that maybe we need to address before, some people are comfortable putting this to a vote, and other discussions I've heard is some people would be open to a referendum so that we can have input from the residents to allow us some decision of how to vote. And I've also thrown out there during my, as some people on the board would say, my rant of allowing $100,000 coming from Germantown reserves to help cover the cost of wells impacted by well number 12. Mine isn't as much tied to the extension of water to Richfield, but without the IGA, I think that one goes away too, unless it would come forward and under something out of trustee Miller's GGF, or General Government and Finance Board, as a possibility, just for well 12 concerns that have been brought to our attention.
But that was, I was going to make a amendment to, to the motion. You put $100,000 in. Along with the $50,000 is already there.
Correct. So you're...
That's, that's why I asked, do you want amendment at this time?
If you, if you want to put that amendment out there, I would definitely take it through its process.
I just did.
All right, you just did. So the motion is for us to enhance the $50,000 that Richfield is putting up by offering $100,000 from our reserves to cover wells, the cost of wells that are impacted by well, residential wells that are impacted by well number 12. And again, my, my only addition to that was within reason and dealing with a drop in the aquifer.
I'll read you a second.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Trustee Baum.
While it's heading in the right direction, I'm not sure it's enough. You just added more houses to the rectangle. What is the dollar value if they all fail? I highly doubt they're all going to fail. I'm not sure what's going to fail, but...
We would be dealing with it based on the impact of well number 12, which would mean that the water level would drop within the residential wells that would not allow their current pump height or the depth of their well to draw water.
Correct, correct. My concern with this format is, you can go through five things, I need all five of them spelled out. Six things, I need all five of them spelled out.
Well, we would have to spell it out for staff, and I agree with you, so they know what information to bring forward.
And that's where I was going, is, is this the right way to do this, or do we just defer action on this to another meeting and give us time to get them the actual wording that we want in there so they can work it out with? Because we're going, we're going to do this with all five points. There's not enough information there for me to say yes or no to it.
And I need the five points. I need something to direct staff to bring information on. We can't say we need more information, because the first question is going to be, okay, what do you want? What are you looking for?
And is it as generic at this point as saying, recite your five points? I'm going to make a motion for those five points to be hammered out by staff and bring back a new write-up with all five of those.
But you could also do that as an additional amendment and still include and vote on, if it would pass, the $100,000 that we're willing to put up in regards to our, our person that we're basing all our confidence on. It's basically an insurance policy. We're saying that the people we brought there were the right people, and this is what they've told us, and the residents are saying, we don't believe you, we think there's going to be some wells that are going to fail. We want insurance on that. So $50,000 is coming from Richfield, and I'm putting up $100,000, or we are, I'm not, I'm careful there, Carrie watching? No. But the village is out of their reserves $100,000, because that's an insurance policy. I think, I think the people that we brought onboard and everybody that looked at it and approved it is probably going to be right, but I'm willing to, to help them feel better in regards to the insurance policy, that there's some monies there in case somebody does have that issue. And again, based on topography, and I don't know where all the wells are, I have no idea what your depths are, they're all over the place within, you know, 100 feet. So I'm basing that on a minimal amount could be impacted. Could be, and that would be the really shallow ones in a, in a tough year. But I'm willing to put that insurance policy up to help, to help the concern, to address the concern. So that's what the discussion is currently on, the amendment to the motion. Further discussion on the motion to amend. No further discussion? I want to do a roll call vote on that, please.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Nyreiter.
Aye.
Trustee Baum.
Aye.
Trustee Hudson.
Nay.
Trustee Kaminski. Trustee Jan Miller.
Nay.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Peiper.
No.
President Walter.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Further discussion on the motion as amended. Trustee Baum.
I, can you summarize your five points again, because I'm going to make a motion for all five of them?
Mine are pluses. Mine, I don't think you want my five points.
I have the five points.
The five points that you want are concerns that are still out there addressing the residents and what they're concerned about. Some of that was, does the actual fees cover the cost for maintenance and infrastructure long-term? Things like that. Trustee Baum, are you, you still at the floor? Then I'm going to go to trustee Nyreiter.
I, these are not in order of importance. Maybe some don't totally apply, but these are some of the questions that I just wrote down as, as after, after you asked me to put a few things in, trying to read my chicken scratch here. First of all, what is the economic impact on both Germantown and Richfield as far as the spillover effect, et cetera? The second thing is, can we dig the current well number 12 deeper, and at what cost? Can we list all of the agency approvals that are needed for this agreement? How large is the area that is affected by the wells monitored? Are we saying now a half mile or a mile? Is there a possibility that there could be some type of insurance liability policy that could help cover all the wells in that area? I don't know that. Also, who is the Germantown point person for this agreement? Also, who is the Germantown point person for this agreement, and who is the Richfield point person? And what are all of Germantown's possible costs? Every dollar has to be labeled, and I and I know that's been asked for.
We're extending the services?
For everything, anything that's in that agreement, what cost come to Germantown, if we can estimate it, Mr. President. And also, what procedures would be needed to be written as to where you go with a complaint if you have a well problem, et cetera? And then also the impact on our police and fire department.
Okay, thank you for that. I have a question in regards to that last statement. Is it possible in regards to how monies would be dispersed? Could that go through, and I'm top of my head right now, I forget that committee that deals with the utilities, our committee?
The Utility Advisory.
Right.
Board, would they have overcharge of that, or could they in regards to how their charter is written? That would, it certainly would require a rewrite of the ordinances. When it comes to water rates, I don't think it's, I don't think the village can give the Utility Advisory Board any any real authority to set those rates. Sewer, the, I believe that probably could be written into the ordinance. But but from a from a water rate perspective, that that's governed by the PSC.
Trustee Kaminsky.
As the hours wane on, my opinion is actually gaining firmer against this, as I would rather call the question frankly, if somebody's brave enough to do that, because I am to that point where some good questions, but we have looked at this for over a year and a half, and we've beaten this thing to a pulp in meetings, and we're nowhere closer to any agreement on this. I really think that we have to set Richfield free to go and pursue Jackson. I do not want to be held to a timeframe. I do agree that that 2050 plan should be completed, and that will give us some more knowledge of the Northeast Corridor, and I'm, it's not going to change my mind about staffing, about not wanting a big box store across the highway with all the traffic and congestion and impact, and it's simply not enough for Germantown. And I rest my case, and I'm just getting more firmer in that position.
Just getting later. Trustee Hudson.
I'll give my time to trustee Peiper.
Oh, that was really nice of him. Thank you, trustee Hudson.
You bet.
Motion to call the question.
Second.
Oh, did you make the motion? No, she didn't. She said she wants somebody to. Motion to call the question.
Well, it's just you call the question, correct? You don't vote on that motion, do you?
Vote on it.
Okay, then I need a second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion, do you have discussion? Okay, then call the question. No, first vote, right? What is the question?
No.
You you vote to determine whether you're going to call the question, and then if it passes, then you call the question. Okay. Put it to vote. As amended. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, aye, raise your hands.
Which which ayes?
Opposed, raise your hands. Motion carries. Call the question. Roll call vote.
Trustee Baum.
As amended.
I will go with me.
Trustee Rick Miller.
Nay.
Trustee Myers.
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider.
Aye.
Trustee Peiper.
No. That's a nay.
Trustee Hudson.
Nay.
Trustee Kaminsky. Trustee Jan Miller.
Nay.
President Walter.
Aye.
Let me take a break.
Motion fails, six to three. Yes, we can take a five-minute break for those that are here, and you'd welcome to stay if you like, but for those that want to leave, we'll take a five-minute break so that we can clear the room and and go further on the agenda to the second item.
Sorry. That was just.
Sorry. Turn up your microphones. Ready? I'd like to call this meeting back to order for the rest of the items listed under new business. What I would like to suggest to the board is if you could move forward. Look at it. Where is it? Conditional, item D, to next on the agenda.
Motion to move new business, item D, to next on the agenda, ahead of A.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Item D under new business is conditional use permit, CUP 01-2022, for an indoor recreation establishment. Elizabeth Orton, applicant for Anderson Brothers Construction, property owner located at West 188 North 10707 Maple Road, for an indoor recreation establishment. To give us some quick information.
Seconded.
Anything to add? Emily? You want to know what it is?
I read it.
I read it. You read it?
Excellent.
It's got a racetrack.
Yes, very nice racetrack. Anything to add?
We do have 10 conditions of approval for the conditional use permit.
And the the motion is to accept that with all 10 conditions?
Correct.
Yes. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion to approve? Trustee Knight Rider.
Emily, what is the age level supposed to be of the kids that are are going to be in there?
Yeah, I think the intention of the applicant is to have a little bit of of activities, some activities for all age levels, so it's really a family-friendly.
High school or or whatever?
Yeah, I think as as long as the, would you say high school would be included in the racing?
Yes, please. We're giving the microphone.
Oops, sorry.
So if you look at, sorry, I'm Hubert Orton, the owner of Get It Hard Play Land, along with my wife, fortunately she had to leave. So if you see the.
Fortunately, yeah.
There's there's three separate rooms right there that are listed as kid play areas. Essentially, that's going to be anything from a toddler up to a teenager, and the racetrack side is mostly adults, not saying that my kids are five and seven and they race on the tracks, but will require an adult to be present there. So those rooms will shift dependent on, you know, at that time, how many kids find one activity greater than the other. So all those walls are modular, so we can move them around and make areas bigger depending on if we have one certain age group that hits during summer or winter.
Thank you. Further discussion? No further discussion? Everybody in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for staying with us. Next item under new business is item A. Kiwanis Temporary Class B Fermented Malt Beverage and Wine License for the July 28 Taste of Germantown Gales Park Pavilion Fireman's Park on Park Avenue.
Motion to approve new business, item A.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? None opposed, motion carries. Next item under new business is item Bs. Zilber Property Group, applicant for ZPG Development LLC, property owner of a 55.9 acre parcel on Gateway Crossing, Lot 4, Certified Survey Map, ordinance 05-2022, for Plan Development District Amendment to add 55.9 acres to the Germantown Gateway Corporate PDD, Resolution 132022, amending conditions and restrictions for the Germantown Gateway Park Corporate Park PDD. Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, anything to add? Director Retschoff. We have representation here from Zilber as well, if you have questions. Trustee Jan Miller.
One of the slides, Jeff, if you could put the slide of the, there. So is it the blue?
It is the blue that is being added to the Plan Development District area.
Does it go into any wetlands?
It includes wetlands that are located in the far southwest corner of the property, but those wetlands are protected as part of the development plan that was approved conditionally by the Plan Commission.
But are they going to have to, are they going to be building anything on it, or is it?
They they won't be building in the wetland nor in the 25-foot village required subterranean.
Okay, I just wanted to, because it looked like it was edging on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Why do you want to break it? Oh, we're taking it all at once, right?
Yeah.
Okay. No further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, raise your hands. Reopposed, motion carries. Next item under new business is item D, I'm sorry, item C. Colgate Gas Inc., applicant and property owner located at West 220 North 9626 Amy Bell Road and North 96 West 216, I'm sorry, 21962 County Line Road 4, number 1, Ordinance 06-2022 Land Use Plan Map Amendment from rural residential to commercial and low-density residential. Ordinance 07-2022 rezoning from B5 Highway Business to the RS4 Single Family Residential Zoning District and 3, a certified survey map to remove, to move the property line.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made and seconded with conditions as presented?
Yes.
Discussion? Anything to add, Associate Planner Sand?
Nope. I would just say it's, we're really just moving a common property line to include a accessory structure with the gas station property at this point. They are providing some fencing and some landscaping to provide screening from the residential area as well.
Trustee Myers?
This is also just phase one, right?
Correct. It's the attention of the property owner to do an expansion of the gas station in the future. That proposal will have to go before the plan commission for review.
Thank you. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Non-opposed, motion carries. Next item under new business is item E, and we can look at E, F, G, and H. Thank you for coming tonight, sir. Each of those are a resolution 14-2022, 15-2022, 16-2022, and 17-2022, and they're all within the authorization and issuance of general promissory notes and bonds for our capital borrowing, our water system for the water tower, and also for the Department of Public Works. You don't want to hear Mr. Costin's presentation?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Wait, wait. What are we approving? All of them at once?
Yes.
Okay. Is this easy falling asleep?
And I guess if I could, if I could point out, there are some significant differences in prior debt issuances, and there are some things I think you'll want to hear.
And that's what Mr. Costin is here to describe to us, because it's not what we're used to for capital borrowing. It's a little different.
Great, thank you. I was hoping he got to speak since I waited this long, so. I appreciate that. Well, what I tried to do is, we have four pre-sale reports in your packet for each issue, and there's a corresponding resolution that was prepared by bond council as well. So you have that in your packet, but rather, instead of going through each of the pre-sale reports, which is about 15 pages each, I tried to summarize in a couple of pages what we're trying to, what the financings are going to accomplish. And so let me just walk through each one of these, and then if they aren't going to be moved forward, we do need to have a roll call vote on each one of those separately per statute. So let me just talk about the 2022A issue. This is really your customary borrowing that you do on an annual basis. It's Fund 40 that you have as part of your capital plan that you approve as part of your budget process. It's $4,365,000 of general obligation notes. Notes is important because it's going to be 10-year issue, and the significance there is you have the ability to move the money around by purpose, right? So if a road comes in less and another project comes in higher, you can move the money between the two. If it's a bond issue, you have these silos where the money has to stay within, and you lose that flexibility. But you have historically done notes for your capital projects, very quick repayment as well. This will finance $3,569,000 in capital projects from Fund 40. And then if you recall, in tax increment district number 7, we have the trail that was added as part of the amendment, and this would fund that trail project as well in tax increment district number 7. We've gone through and updated the cash flows for 6, 7, and 8 as part of this, and made sure that the structure that we have laid out for each of the purposes related to 6, 7, and 8 work from a cash flow perspective so that we don't run in the shortfalls in our tax increment district. So this will be a 10-year note with a projected interest cost of about $275. Rates are on the move, not in the right direction, and we've seen a significant bump in interest rates. The second issue, that's the geo note, tax-exempt geo note issue. The second is a taxable general obligation note, Series 2022B. Now, if you recall, when we went through the amendment to tax increment district number 7 with Capstone Quadrangle, the agreement with them that was approved by this group called for them to put in the actual road improvement, and then you would escrow funds, and they would draw on that escrow once on a draw basis. So this will fund the escrow per the agreement you have with Capstone in TID number 7. The difference here is because it's a private purpose, meaning it's going to affect a private developer, it becomes a taxable issue at a little bit higher interest rate, which we've accounted for when we amended TID number 7. So this will be $2,575,000 taxable general obligation notes. Again, to finance the escrow for Capstone, an estimated rate of about 3.25% on that issue. The third issue, the village has not typically gone through and issued separate revenue bonds for capital projects. You've typically issued general obligation debt and then had the utilities pay that portion of the obligation. What's different these days is that you have a significant number of projects being financed, and on the near horizon, you have a very large DPW building that will start eating into your borrowing capacity, and we do have some concern over how it could impact the village's bond rating as well. So to preserve some of the borrowing capacity, we are proposing a water revenue bond, Series 2022C, and this will fund $4,285,000 of water system projects, 2.5 million coming from the water system for the well and tower, $600,000 for the well and tower from TID 7, $500,000 from TID 6. When we created the districts for 6, 7, and 8, we had an allocation where roughly 50% of the well and tower were going to be the responsibility of the utility, and the other 50% will be paid for out of 6, 7, and 8 because of the growth that we've seen in 6, 7, and 8. The good news about TID number 8 is that we are actually at a point where we're able to use cash increment coming from TID number 8 to be able to pay down that obligation. So this would be for the well and tower in regards to what's being developed out by TID 7 and TID number 8. Lastly, the 2022D issue is a $4,530,000 note anticipation note. It'll finance projects related to the DPW building. No, not the building, but the land purchase and infrastructure and site grading, those kind of costs. The reason this is being done is you haven't, you're not at the point where you're going to be borrowing money for the DPW building at this point. You have a lot of costs that are going to be incurred, including the land purchase. So we're issuing a note anticipation note with the anticipation that you're going to be issuing general obligation bonds for the DPW building. When that comes due, and when you issue those bonds, this note anticipation note will be refinanced as part of that issue, and that'll be done within the next two years. So think of it as kind of a construction loan almost for the DPW building and being able to handle it that way. So that's the D issue. We put together a timing schedule as well, and so if it's authorized, and again, authorization is allowing us to proceed with these four different financings on behalf of the village. We work closely with staff to put together what are called official statements, and then we will target dates. The dates that we've targeted for sale would be, sorry, April 27th. Two of the issues would sell on April 27th, and two of the issues would sell on April 28th. Just selling four debt issues for one community on one specific date, we think really waters down the impact, and it dilutes the number of potential bidders on the bonds. So we, when we do have multiple issues for a community, we like to break it up into a couple of days. And then the closing on all four issues would occur on May 25th, and that's when you would have the funds available. What's a little bit different in these four resolutions also is that what we're proposing is what's called a parameter sale. We do this a lot this time of year. This will be the first time, I think, we've done this for the village. But we have a number of communities we work for that, this is all they ever do is parameter sales. And what a parameter sale is, is just that we pick a different day than your normal village board meeting to hold the sale. We still produce all the same documents. We get the same information to you. It's just not on a specific board meeting night, and there's really two reasons for that. This time of year, it's construction season, right? Everybody's financing their capital projects, and everyone meets on Mondays and Tuesdays. So you're competing not just against all the other communities in Wisconsin nationally also, and everybody's meeting on Mondays and Tuesdays. And so if you look at a bond sale calendar like I do, I wouldn't expect anyone else to, there is a bond sale calendar nationally that we look at daily, and it shows the number of issues that are being sold. If you look at Mondays and Tuesdays, they're just loaded. Wednesday is less and Thursday is less. So we're moving this to a Wednesday, Thursday off date, if you will, and we think that'll be a better execution for the village on all four of these issues. So that's the primary reason. The second reason is, is that if we don't have to be on a specific date for the sale, and we can move this, it eliminates where we may have disruption in the market, and we can just push the sale out a day to a week, whatever. We're not targeting one specific date. Now, there has been plenty of disruption in the markets recently, and so this gives us a better, more flexibility and hopefully avoiding those kind of disruptions. So this, what you're approving today with all four of these is what's called a parameter sale, which would be a separate date. But again, you will receive all the same documentation you always have when we've done kind of a date-specific sale. So that's a quick summary of the four issues and what the purposes are, the term for each one, and then the process that we expect to take you through this time around. Obviously, we'll have to go through a rating process like we've always done as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions, or Steve, if you have anything you want to add?
Board, questions?
To approve new business E.
Right, but we were taking it all at once, and we were told we need to take each one individually.
That's why I just did.
Right, but we need to withdraw the original motion.
You could, well, you could split the question, and let's just vote on each one individually.
All right. You have a question, Jan? Do we need to vote on the split other question?
No, you could just do that with consent, and then do a roll call on each individual one.
All right, that's what we'll do then. So we'll start with new business item D, E, I'm sorry, which is Resolution 14-2022, authorizing the issuance of sale not to exceed $4,365,000 general obligation promissory notes, Series 2022A. Do I have a motion to approve? It's out there. Then I need a roll call vote. Thank you.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
No.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, Resolution 15-2022 Authorization The Issuance and Sale of Not to Exceed $2,575,000 Taxable General Obligation Promissory Notes, Series 2022B. Roll call vote.
New business F.
It's all part of the motion. We'll do roll call vote. I'll just name for, I'll just call roll call vote for each of the four. So roll call vote on item F.
I'm sorry, I'm catching up. Okay. Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
No.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item, G, Resolution 16-2022 Providing The Issuance and Sale of Not to Exceed $4,285,000 Water System Revenue Bonds, Series 2022C, and Providing For Other Details and Covenants With Respect There Too. Roll call vote.
Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper?
No.
President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, Resolution 17-2022 Authorizing The Issuance and Sale of Not to Exceed $4,530,000 Note Anticipation Notes, Series 2022D. Roll call vote.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper? President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for sticking with us, Phil. Next item under new business is item J, Award Contract to Wolf Paving in the Amount Not to Exceed $1,468,927.40 for the 2022 Road Improvement Project.
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to Wolf Paving in the amount not to exceed $1,468,927.40 for the 2022 Road Improvement Project.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Trustee Jan Miller?
Was there a list of the projects? Oh, yeah, it was. There were like six or seven? Yeah, okay.
Further discussion. Thank you for coming tonight. Have a good night.
Can those change or be morphed in case, you know, I don't know. For some reason, something falls apart. There's an earthquake, crack in the road.
When we bid the project, we bid out, we bid out about three, I forget the base bid roads were. And then we bid alternates out, and so what we did is we fit all the alternates in except for Bonnywell Road, which would have extended way past the, almost 1.85 million. So we bid out base bids, and then we bid out alternates to try to see how the bids come in and fit in and use up as much of the money we can that's given to us for a given year.
Further discussion? No further discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Hudson? Trustee Baum? Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?
Aye.
Trustee Knight Rider?
Aye.
Trustee Peeper? President Walter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item under new business is item K, Award Contract to Will Surge Electric, Inc. in the Amount Not to Exceed $298,874.34 for the McQuon Road Street Lighting Project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Trustee Peeper? I think you want to say something?
I, yes, kind of. I just, I do. Sorry.
Go ahead.
I kind of have an issue with approving this amount of money to fix the lighting on McQuon Road when, or to replace it.
Replace it.
When my car almost falls apart every time I go through the intersection of McQuon and Pilgrim, like the roads are, like we're fixing the lighting before we're fixing the road. That's my only issue. Like every day, I take that intersection of Pilgrim and McQuon, and it is every day. I have to, like, it's like instinct now. I have to grab anything that's kind of loose in the car, hold a kid in place because it's so bumpy.
Just voted on what's going to get fixed in 2022. And it's a state highway.
Right, right around the corner of. Right, right around the corner of Pilgrim?
Right on the corner.
One forty, that's part of one forty-five if you're turning left as you're headed east.
What do you got to do to get the state to kick in and? You hit that plane. It's on.
They did do parts of one forty-five north of Mecklenburg Road. In fact, it's dramatically better just based on the parade route along that Pilgrim Avenue up to Freisch that road. It's just, that intersection is, has some rough spots in it, and part of that is simply, we've had a lot of water sewer breaks in that area, have we not?
Not in the intersection. I think the most of the problem with that is the asphalt that was put in some years ago, just with the DOT tried on different grades, I think it's an asphalt that kind of slides more when the trucks stop. That's what causes the rippling effect, kind of gets pushed a little bit. We have looked at it, where there is some traffic replacement that has to be, has to take place also. So it's a project that'll be coming, coming down the road.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to approve the Will Surge Electric, Inc. in the amount not to exceed, for those on the board, and I think, Trustee Peeper, you were on the board at that time, this was brought forward six months ago, nine months ago, and we pushed it out based on the original bid, correct?
Original bid was done by an RFP, which the village attorney ruled to be the incorrect method of bidding it, and so we were directed to put it off a public bid, which this is, and we got a much more favorable bid. The RFP, I think, came in around four hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the same work, and this came in just under three hundred thousand.
Right. At that time, Trustee Hudson was, was very adamant in the, in the need for this based on it being our welcoming corridor.
I appreciate you pointing out my errors.
Not your error, just your statement. That's not, I'm not, that was not my point. That was not my point, sir.
I agree with him too.
I remember it though.
My point was the importance of the corridor, not the timing of the, of the recommendation.
How many, how many?
Trustee Peeper?
Yeah. How many lights is this going to fix? All of them?
All of them.
Every single light on Mecklenburg Road?
From Division to Pilgrim.
From Division to Pilgrim.
Thirty-six.
So not past Division?
How do they base that numbering system? Because I was going by it the other day, and they're not sequential. Jump around in numbers. It'll go like one, two, three, and also seventy-two will come in, seventy-three, seventy-four, and then it'll go to some other number.
Number on the poll?
Yeah.
Oh, We Energies. We Energies owns those, that system, however they number them.
Okay.
I don't want to get into their system.
We won't have them.
Further discussion on the motion to approve monies for replacing Mecklenburg Road Street Lighting? No further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Baum?
Aye.
Trustee Jan Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Hudson?
Aye.
Trustee Kaminsky? Trustee Rick Miller?
Aye.
Trustee Myers?[1690.71]